I'm Kate Ford and the president of the school board, and we have concluded closed session for this evening. It's Tuesday, August 10th, 2021 at 5:37 PM. I'm calling to order this regular meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District School Board. And now for information about interpretation for this meeting.
Thank you, Board President Ford. I will be giving this announcement with regards to language interpretation in both English and Spanish. Buenas tardes. Voy a dar este anuncio sobre la interpretación en inglés y español. In order to provide language access, we will be providing simultaneous bidirectional interpretation in English and Spanish. If you are bilingual, you do not have to click anything. If you are not bilingual in English and Spanish, you will have to select your language in order to hear the interpretation. If you are using a laptop or desktop, at the bottom right of your screen, you will see a globe icon that says "Interpretation." Please click on the globe now and select "English." If you are using an iPad or a phone, locate the three-dot menu and select "Language Interpretation." Then select "English" and click "Done." And remember, when it's your turn to speak, please remember to be loud and clear and speak at a moderate pace. We are also offering American Sign Language interpretation for this meeting. If you will be using ASL interpretation, please use the Zoom app on your computer, tablet, or phone to join this meeting. If you join this meeting through your web browser, you may not be able to see the ASL interpreter at all times. Esta reunión contará con interpretación simultánea bidireccional en inglés y en español. Si usted es bilingüe, no tiene que presionar nada. Si usted no es bilingüe, tendrá que elegir su idioma para escuchar la interpretación. Si está usando una computadora, verá un icono en la parte inferior de su pantalla a la derecha en forma de globo que dice "Interpretación." Haga clic ahí ahora y seleccione "Español." Si está usando un iPad o su teléfono, localice el menú de tres puntos, haga clic en "Interpretación de idiomas", elija "Español" y "Finalizar." O si está en inglés, dice "Done." Y cuando sea su turno de hablar, por favor, recuerde hablar con voz fuerte y clara y a un paso moderado. Gracias. Thank you. We may begin.
Thank you. And now, Dr. Maldonado, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Absolutely. Please rise and face the flag to my right. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, no action was taken in closed session, but two items will be voted on during the Action Agenda section of this meeting. And so now we'll continue with the regular open session agenda. As 2021-22 begins, we find our community battling the COVID-19 Delta variant and following the county mandate for mask-wearing indoors. The board is meeting in person, and the public may participate through live streaming. We look forward to inviting the public back to our boardroom as soon as we receive the go-ahead from the county public health. Excuse me. As you know, we're starting board meetings at 5:30 now, and we have two regularly scheduled reports tonight: COVID-19 at 7:00 PM and the Summer of Learning at 8:00 PM. The board will take a 10-minute break at or as close to 7:30 PM as reasonable. And so, Dr. Maldonado, will you continue with your report to the board?
Yes, thank you. Greetings, board members, Board President Ford, members of the staff and the public, and all of those who are joining us via Zoom. We have been working to finalize plans for the launch of the 2021-22 school year. We're so excited to see our students back on campus on Tuesday, August 17th, and hope that everyone has had the opportunity to enjoy their summer. Tonight, you'll be hearing about vaccination rates. We also have our new teachers joining us for an orientation on Wednesday, and we're looking forward to hosting all of our teachers and certificated staff for our annual back-to-school kickoff on Thursday. High school orientations are taking place this week as well. We are in our final push to make sure every student is registered. Please go to our website to start this process or check in with your school site so that your student is able to receive their class schedules and teacher assignments prior to the school year. We're also hosting two ribbon-cutting ceremonies this week, celebrating the new hands-on learning space at McKinley Elementary School on Wednesday at 3:30 and celebrating the new Santa Barbara Junior High multipurpose auditorium on Thursday at 2:30. Board members, you have all been invited to attend these events as we recognize the hard work that went into these projects, the generosity of our local voters who supported the bond measures that are also making these spaces possible. Now, I'd like to introduce to you a few talented individuals in our Santa Barbara community this evening. To begin, we have Mateo Duvjin, who attended Adelante Charter School, Santa Barbara Junior High School, and just graduated this year from Santa Barbara High. Mateo's grandmother, Maria Ray, was a longtime and very beloved elementary teacher in our district and an advocate for multilingual education. Mateo has many talents, from playing baseball to launching his own salsa-making side business. This year, his artwork was chosen for the Old Spanish Days Fiesta that I went to Spanish, Old Spanish Days Fiesta poster. And Mateo is here with us via Zoom. Mateo, can you please share with us how that came to be, this poster that you created, and what inspired you to create this beautiful rendition of Santa Barbara?
Hi. I was asked by the president this year, Stephanie Petlow, to design the poster, to graphically design it. So her granddaughter did the artwork, and I put it all together, showing each major landmark that we have in Santa Barbara. And we chose the colors and everything, made it pop. So I was pretty thankful to be able to have the chance to make the poster this year.
And is there anything else you want to tell us about the process or a message that we should take away from all your beautiful art?
I don't think so. I just think, you know, if you live in Santa Barbara, you know these special places and how much they mean to the city, and we wanted to capture that in the poster this year.
Thank you, Mateo, for being with us and for creating such a beautiful poster. Congratulations. Next, board members and public, we have the pleasure to recognize another artist in our community. When I saw the beautiful signage at Dos Pueblos High School, I immediately felt that it created the warm, welcoming environment we want to see in all our schools, including the sense of inclusivity, which we know helps send a message to students that they belong to this community and are seen and, most importantly, valued. John Rochelle is a Dos Pueblos parent whose sons both attended Adams Elementary and La Cumbre Junior High. He is an award-winning graphic artist who has designed iconic logos and fonts from Angry Birds to Black Panther and Daredevil and many other fonts from Marvel Comics. He recently led this very cool project at Dos Pueblos, and we asked him to share a little bit about it. Principal Woodard shared that John donated more than 100 hours of his time designing and painting and working with students to make this happen. He is with us tonight, and we're going to ask him to share a little bit about this project, what led him to do it, and what inspires his work. John, are you with us?
I am. Hi.
Thank you for joining us. So can you tell us a little bit more about your work, your inspiration?
Sure. I'm a graphic designer at Santa Barbara. Been living in Santa Barbara about 25 years, and my son Dash will be a junior at DP in the fall. And ever since we started at DP, Principal Woodard had talked to me about helping to sort of consolidate all of the different logos and colors and fonts and different graphic elements that the school was using. He felt that everything was a little all over the place from 50 years of history, and he asked if I could help kind of take the best of what was working and make more of a consistent style for the school. And so, you know, I started doing a lot of designs for him, and the first thing that we hit on was the wall signs for the school. And it seemed like something we could start on and work on during the summer and get student help with. And I just kind of went big with it, doing some mock-ups on the computer, and I just, you know, made the letters as big as I possibly could on the school to kind of have as much of an impact as we could and add as much color as we could to the walls. And everybody liked it, and they let me keep going. And who else? Scott Gutentag at the school gave some suggestions for adding background color to kind of help the logos pop and also to help when the schools eventually repainted that they wouldn't have to paint in and around all the details, that everything would stay pretty much as it was. And that kind of inspired the 3D shadows and shapes that we came up with. And I guess the bilingual was just something I hit on right off the bat, just working with two colors. It seemed like, well, why not have the word up there twice and provide a translation for kids who don't speak Spanish and as a way to just be more inclusive for the kids that do speak Spanish.
Well, that's amazing. We love that you've left your mark, both in the film industry but also here with Dos Pueblos High School. We appreciate all you've done, and congratulations. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Sure thing. It's been a lot of fun, and I look forward to doing more.
Thank you. Oh, we have more schools. We have 18 more. We'll call you. Lastly, board members and public, I have a very special treat for you all tonight. This is someone that we all need to be keeping an eye on so we can say, "I knew him when." Eliel Posos Martinez is a sophomore at San Marcos High School and an extremely gifted saxophonist who performs in a variety of places, including outside of his own home or on State Street where crowds gather to hear his incredible music. I had an opportunity to hear him on the Fourth of July and was inspired to see how the audience responded to his amazing and beautiful musical talents. I want to thank his mom, who is here with us today, and his sister as well, who are incredibly supportive of his passion. Eliel started playing drums at the age of eight and received his first music lessons at the Santa Barbara Boys and Girls Club, one of our incredible partners. His mother, Gisela Martínez, said that one day he had a spark of passion for the saxophone, and he has loved it ever since. He is a member of the Advanced Jazz Band at San Marcos and is a very, very good student as well. Welcome, Eliel, and please share your talent with us. Thank you. Thank you so much, Eliel. And board members, I just want to remind us that my, at least my belief is that the arts are an expression of our humanity, and that is the business that we're in with all of our wonderful students, teachers, leaders in our district. And I'm very proud to feature so many of our talents like Eliel's. Is there any questions for Eliel while we have him here? Any comments?
Oh, please, Mrs. Munoz.
Thank you so much. Muchas gracias por una hermosa canción y tu talento de sabor a mí. Muchas gracias, impresionante. Thank you so much.
Please, Ms. Capps.
Yeah, thank you so much. I would love to know why you chose that song. I just, I, it really speaks to me, but I would love to hear.
Well, so Kenny G is obviously a really popular saxophone player, and he released a Latin album like a while ago. And one of the songs on there was "Sabor a mí", and that was a really nice song that a lot of people liked, so I chose to play it. Yeah.
Beautiful. Thank you. Ms. Alvarez?
Thank you very much, and congratulations on such an amazing talent. I'd like to know where you play, so I can come and listen to you. And anytime you want to come over to the board meeting, you know where we're at.
Thank you.
Really, it was a great way to begin the meeting. Mr. Kelly, please.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I wish we could start every meeting that way. Sorry, I'm close to the mic. Also, I'll see you next year at school. Hopefully, we're finally in person. I go to San Marcos as well, so feel free to say hi to me in the halls.
I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Maldonado for making this possible today. I'm really excited to announce that we are going to try to begin every board meeting with something related to the arts. And here we have Eliel, who is the inaugural student performer. So one more time, a nice round of applause for Eliel.
I'm sorry, President.
Oh, Wendy, please.
I'm just through the technology. Thank you, Eliana, I'm able to hear your beautiful playing. So thank you again for being here and being the first one to start off as many. So thank you so much.
Great. Let's continue on now with the student board report. Mr. Kelly, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Not much to report since the last meeting, but I'm excited to go back to school. I went to orientation today. And yeah, I'm going to be continuing communicating with students, and hopefully, before the next board meeting, I'll get a group of students together that I can meet with on a biweekly basis so I can ensure that I'm sticking to my promise of equity of education and resources. I think, I believe that's the most important thing, especially when it comes to education. This is what provides opportunities for the future. And I cannot represent the whole student body by myself, so getting that group together is absolutely necessary.
Sounds great. Thank you so much. So now we'll continue with board member comments and correspondence. I'll begin with Ms. Munoz.
Thank you, President Ford. I would just like to say that I'm excited and looking forward to the beginning of school. I appreciate all the preparation and hard work that is being done by all in order to ensure that our students and staff are able to begin the new year, the new school year, in the safest manner possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Simms-Morton, do you have any comments tonight?
I do. Thank you, President Ford. I'll make some really brief, again, thank you for the technology to be able to be there, and I'm really excited for the upcoming school year and hope the students and parents and everybody in the communities are ready and ready for us to get back to school. And I've here in this community here in Texas, I've been looking at the local schools here, even the one that I actually went to. And they're getting ready for school and working really hard, and everybody's really excited to be back. And so it's good to see it here locally and also to be able to bring back that enthusiasm back to Santa Barbara.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Capps?
Just to echo how it's fun to drive by schools and see the parking lots full again. And I know a lot of them were already full during summer because we had such a robust summer school, but we're excited to get back and come together as a community for our kids.
Terrific. Thank you. And Ms. Alvarez, please.
Yes. A big thank you to all the teachers who are spending countless of hours getting their classroom ready and getting ready for back-to-school. So thank you very much to Mr. Vance and Dr. Maldonado for hosting the Leadership Institute a couple of weeks ago and also the meeting that you had with the office managers. They're such an important component of our district and the work that they do to welcome the families and the students. So thank you so much for doing that. And thank you to all the classified staff for all the work that you were doing, to all admin. It takes, it really takes a village to get school going, and we're looking forward to seeing the students back and seeing the parents back as well. So thank you, and I look forward to visiting the schools once they are in session.
Absolutely. Thank you. Also, I'd like to announce that since our last board meeting in July, the District Leadership Institute took place over the week of July 26th to the 30th. I was lucky enough to be invited to speak to the leaders and moreover, to observe what a great group of leaders we have in this district and what a terrific week of learning, sharing, thinking, and planning was experienced by all. And just like the Major League Baseball players each choose a song to walk onto the field to, I challenged everyone to think about what songs would be symbolic of their own walk on to the 2021-22 school year. Members of the cabinet chose walk-on songs too, and it was a way to have a little bit of fun and also reflect on how we are all so very different, but our inspiration comes to us in many different ways too. One highlight for me was when we revealed that Dr. Maldonado's choice was the 1975 disco hit, "The Hustle", and she led the entire group in dancing "The Hustle." A new tradition was born. Many thanks also to the Moxy Museum and the Santa Barbara Educational Foundation for their generosity of the space and the meet-and-greet reception on Thursday afternoon. And finally, tonight, we celebrate another classified employee who is retiring. Esther Caesar has been with Santa Barbara Unified for over 30 years and is retiring as an administrative secretary in Student Services. She'll be leaving us on September 1st. I want to thank you, Esther, for all your service, your dedication, your contributions to our students and to our district. We all wish you a happy and healthy retirement as well as some clearly well-deserved rest and fun. At this time, it is our opportunity for comments from the public about items that are not on the agenda this evening. And all of the public comments tonight will be limited to two minutes each because we have quite a few, and also, they were informed of this earlier today. So Ms. Trujillo, do we have any public comments for this particular issue, issues that are not on the agenda?
Thank you, President Ford. Members of the board, good evening. Yes, we do have 10 speakers on this item. I will name the first five so they can be getting ready. Dani Blanc, Linda Bonet, Peggy Wilson, Judy Brown, Shelley Trust. And I will begin with Dani Blanc.
Hi. I'm here to speak again, and I would like to know when our questions are going to be answered and also why you have to sit here outside when other people could go in that's not part of the board. That's just my only two questions. I would love and appreciate it if we could go inside to fight for our kids' rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Linda Bonet. Linda Bonet, can you, can you hear us?
Ms. Trujillo, could you announce that again? It was a little hard to hear.
Yes, Linda Bonet. Ms. Bonet, can you unmute yourself?
The elected official who will stand with the people, stand with them.
With Bonet?
And if they won't, remove them from office because they're unfit. They're unfit.
Where were my bipartisan judges today to witness the Secretary of State being in my office? The Democrat Secretary of State being in my office? Who knows what kind of little do you complain?
I'm sorry, we're not able to hear the speaker. It seemed like there was more than one speaker, so I'd like to have the member of the public that has been called on, and hopefully, I can hear it better.
President Ford, I will come back to Ms. Bonet.
Okay.
With our next speaker, which is Peggy Wilson. Ms. Peggy Wilson, can you hear us? Would you please unmute yourself, Peggy Wilson? No response, so I will move to our next speaker. Judy Brown. Ms. Judy Brown is not online, so I will go on to our next speaker, which is Shelley Trust. Shelley Trust, can you hear us? Would you please unmute yourself?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Yes. I'm sorry, I couldn't figure out from my phone how to unmute myself, and I lost the Zoom meeting on my computer. What was on my mind, it doesn't seem to ever be on the agenda anymore, is the sex education curriculum that was passed for my grandson's school age in junior high school. With the kids going back to school this fall, I'm very concerned about this curriculum. I think that there are a lot of things in it that are not wholesome and are not family-oriented. And so I just would like to know, is that curriculum going to be implemented in this school year? That was my question.
Thank you for your time. I will name our five more speakers. Alfred Parmalu, Barbara Battistini, Justin Shores, Caroline Abate, and Sheridan Rosenberg. And I will begin with Alfred Parmalu. Hello, can you hear us?
Hello?
Yes. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm a Santa Barbara resident, and my daughter went through the public school system. Even back when my daughter reached her junior year at the Santa Barbara High School, she asked to leave the public school system. Her reason that she did was that she didn't feel like the environment was conducive to her realizing herself or her education. She held a GPA over 4.0, maybe a 4.3. Did you know that someone could have a higher GPA than 4.0? That's truly amazing. Generally, I'm in support of our schools, the concept- the concept and the mission. A place that is safe and supportive where the village entrusted children for part of the day while they, the parents, can occupy themselves to maintain a roof over their heads and food on the table. Conceptually and ideally, the schools act as an extension of the family beliefs, supporting the values and the morals of the village, helping to socialize the children, and at the same time, because of the combined resources, are also able to teach skills and provide basic education. As a consequence, schoolchildren become informed, learn skills, and feel empowered to move to life, to realize their potential, their wellness, and serve the community. This is the desire of any healthy community to support health, wellness for their own and out of the hole. The school board system plays an important role in supporting and maintaining these schools. At this time, I want to say thank you to all of you for being there, sitting in these seats, created to foster our education system and be supportive. I want to review what, in my perspective, is the basic role of the school board of trustees. To me, it is for you to act as overseers to assure that the mission, the objective of the public system, the public school system, serves the purpose of our community, that the schools never forget their main mission, to safeguard the community's children, their future treasures, to always the viability of the school system, making it serve at the highest level.
Thank you.
As members of the board sitting in those chairs, are you?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Peggy Wilson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm so sorry, I had technical problems. Okay, board members, online parents, and community. Did you know that Benjamin Rush was a founder, signer of the Declaration of Independence? He was the father of public schools, and he said, "Teach students to love and serve God, country, and family." This board is far from that. I've attended countless meetings with parents and family members objecting to sex ed curriculum, just communities, CRT that teach racism, hate, or Marxism and anti-God. This board believes it knows what's best for your student, not the family. This board is now partnered with Planned Parenthood, the largest provider of abortions in the nation that harvest fetal tissue and organs for financial profit. This board is giving Planned Parenthood access to your student. I've spent several years coming to board meetings, pleading with the board to listen to the parents. I've been angry with the board, but now I'm just appalled at the pride and arrogance of this board. This board is not for excellent education. Look at the grades. The board's sworn duty is to an untried ideology on your students. Parents, it's time to leave government schools. Parents, teach your children to love truth, to seek truth, and defend truth. It's time, parents, to pull your kids out of government schools because you can, because government schools are the worst in the nation, because government schools are morally repugnant and anti-God. And parents, did you know that the universities of Harvard, Yale, and Princeton all started as Christian colleges to train ministers and teach biblical truth? Be inquisitive, parents. Be fearless. Be courageous. They're your children, and they are the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Linda Bonet.
Hi, I'm glad we got this squared away here. That sax player was awesome. Thank you. Parents, grandparents, and interested citizens, please put me down for inoculating every child from pre-K to 12th grade. I implore all parents to inoculate your children with a truth serum. What is the truth? Simply, Jesus loves the little children, all the children of the world, red, yellow, black, and white. They are precious in His sight. The truth is what we are all taught by Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. It's the content of your character, not the color of your skin. What are the lies? CRT says white children are oppressors and villains. Brown and black children are oppressed and victims. Teach, educate, inoculate your child. Tell them that their teachers are lying to them. Some teachers actually believe it's poison. Others teach it because they're mandated to and they want to keep their jobs. Expose the Marxist, racist indoctrination that lie to our kids. Our children don't belong to the corrupt teachers' unions. They are ours and created in the image of God. To Supervisor Maldonado and the school board, you are all taught the truth. MLK's famous words are in our country's DNA for the past 55 years. Somewhere along the line, you knowingly drank the Kool-Aid. You rejected the truth and embraced a ludicrous lie. There is a revolution going around across this nation by way of we, the people. It's called school choice. It means that each child will get X amount of dollars, and the parents decide where the children will go. When there's competitions, parents won't choose this venue, or your curriculum for that matter. Let's see, for now, you and the teachers' unions have the power. Enjoy it. Have a party. This is the perfect time for you to do your self-congratulatory happy talk you are so good at. Because when the parents take back their power through school choice, you will no longer be needed, no longer be funded, or no longer be employed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Justin Shores.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. The point of a local board is to judge the community's responses and to govern locally, not to govern top-down from the federal government. And that's what we saw last week with all the mandates that you guys put into all of the public schools across the nation. This was not you guys talking to your community. This was not looking at the case counts. This was not, this was not well thought out. This was doing what you're told. You guys are blindly following your party, and that is not helping our kids. I've followed a lot of boards. I went to the OSHA board. I went up to, I listened to the CDPH. And they all blame each other. OSHA even says, "No one has died from the vaccine. We should all just take it." How is that okay? How is somebody so misinformed making our health decisions, and you guys are just referring back to them? We ask for data. You guys don't provide it. We want the data. We want you to prove all these emergencies. Prove the fact that you're going to put our kids in masks another year. Prove to us why our kids are going to suffer another year with no reason. These kids do not get the virus. If they do, they're asymptomatic. They're not feeling it. We need to work through this like every other virus. Stop using this for power. Let our kids learn. Start teaching our kids. This needs to stop, and we're not going away.
Thank you. Next speaker, Shelley Trust.
Ms. Trujillo, I believe we already had Shelley.
Oh. I apologize. Thank you.
I think it's Barbara next.
She is not online, so our next speaker will be Sheridan Rosenberg.
Good evening. Thank you. I actually just wanted to bring up this News-Hawk article that came out August 7th about Santa Barbara Unified School District experiencing a leadership exodus. And I just wanted to address that. First of all, you know, I want to be open-minded about Hilda. I think Carrie Matzewo was a disaster, and I've always had such high hopes for Hilda. I have to say that the departure of Maria Larias Horton is a huge step forward. She was abusive. She was toxic. And it's good that she's gone. I can only say to you that the person you replace should be someone who is warm, who listens to families, all families, who brings these families together regardless of their socioeconomic statuses or ethnic backgrounds. That should be a priority. Thank you for the departure of Maria Larias Horton. I also want to talk about Todd Rickman, long overdue. Replacing him with Brian Rouse is a huge improvement. The woman who was sexually harassed by him allegedly is a friend of mine, and it was a real trauma for her. Knowing that he's gone is a good thing. I also want to bring up Meg Jete's departure. I was really troubled to read that Meg, who in my opinion was warm and competent and conscientious and a loyal, a very loyal member of the district for 30 years, asked for another six months so she could get her full retirement benefits. And apparently, that was denied to her. And you know, Kate, I think, I know that you know Meg and respect her. And Hilda, I think you need to change this and revisit it. That was an unfair thing to do to Meg. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Barbara Battistini.
Our board members, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Back in September of 2020, the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board marched in lockstep with one another to push and adopt the Teen Talk curriculum, in spite of over 1,000 voices protesting this perverted Planned Parenthood material. In the Zoom meeting, there were close to 90 people speaking, and at the end of the night, you all bowed your heads and cast your vote. I would like you to sit there right now and listen again to another example straight from the book Teen Talk. Many parents are clueless and would be shocked to know this is what our leaders voted in. Courtney, Lisa and I have been dating for over a year. When we slept together for the first time, I had kissed a few guys before her, but never another woman. Let's just say that kisses from guys left me feeling bored, like there was something missing. It was a school night, but my parents were out of town, so I took their opportunity to stay home at Lisa's house. We went down to the basement and started watching a movie. Neither of us had ever been with another girl before, but she had sex with a guy in the past. I asked her about STDs and all that, and we knew we didn't have to worry about pregnancy. About 15 minutes into the movie, we started making out and decided to move upstairs to her bedroom. I felt nervous, but excited. Lisa began to move quickly, but I stopped her and said, "Hey, we have all night. Let's take our time." And she agreed. The next morning, I woke up next to her and knew that being with a woman felt right to me. Okay, I would like you to understand that this curriculum sexualizes children, teaches children to consent to sex, promotes dangerous and anal and oral sex, promotes homosexual and bisexual behaviors, promotes sexual pleasure, promotes solo and mutual masturbation, promotes transgender ideology, and has our children make friends with their provided counselors and teachers. Planned Parenthood, Planned Parenthood, the largest provider for abortion, is in your back pocket, and it is time, as community, called this board to accountability. We're asking parents to schools. Thank you.
President for, that concludes public comment on this item.
Ms. Trujillo, I think we were going to have Carolina Bate. Did she decide not to?
She is not online.
She's right at the door.
Okay.
I know. It'll be fine.
Do you want to speak into the phone so that I can hear you?
Want to speak?
Speak into the phone.
Speak into the phone.
Okay.
Did you see school board members and members of the public? Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you.
This is not working. I'm sorry. The public can't hear you. Are you not online?
You're muted.
Sandra, is there somewhere you can help her?
Absolutely. She can, I will go outside. One second.
Excuse me? Just in the interest of time, can we move to the next person?
Just to save the meeting, I'll just speak and say my public comment, then you can move on, so that your meeting isn't held up.
The public has to hear you.
That's okay. I'll just speak really loud.
Okay, go ahead.
Ms. Trujillo, can you unmute Judy Braun, and she'll use that phone?
Yes. Judy Braun is not connected online unless she's logged in with a different name.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, school board members and members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. We all know how important education is for the future of our students and our country. Tragically, public schools deprive children of their rightful education in many ways. At the worst, are teaching children sexual curriculums, which put dangerous and bizarre ideas into their delicate hearts and minds, against which they do not have the mental capacity to defend themselves. Public schools teach racial curriculums that are full of inaccurate American history and plant the seeds of hate and animosity among our students. When children are deprived of their education, it is like putting a curse on them. This is illustrated by the whole coronavirus situation, which is so complicated, and there is so much to know and understand. This shows exactly why our country must have educated citizens who are taught truly objective science, math, statistics, medicine, cellular biology, data analysis, research, and all of the many aspects that go into understanding the coronavirus situation. The curse of ignorance will haunt and hurt them for the rest of their lives because they are at the mercy of the government to explain things to them, make decisions for them, and tell them what to do. How will they know if they are being told the truth or being deceived and manipulated if they do not have the knowledge base to think for themselves? Until the day when public schools can again become the valuable academic institutions they were originally supposed to be, parents, please support California school choice ballot measure for November 2022. This will establish education savings accounts and give parents a choice and a chance to take their child out of public school. This will require about a million signatures starting this September to get on the ballot.
I'm, thank you.
Each gathering will be just like how we were able to recall Gavin Newsom. Thank you so much for your time and your attention.
President for, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much, Ms. Trujillo. We're now going to move on to the consent agenda to approve the items that are considered routine and not likely to require any discussion. Dr. Maldonado and her staff have recommended that the board approves all of the consent agenda items, and we have also had an opportunity to consider and ask questions about these items before tonight. So first, Ms. Trujillo, are there any public comments on the consent agenda items?
President for, we have two public comments on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Barbara Battistini and Sheridan Rosenberg. I will begin with Barbara Battistini.
Hi, I'm sorry. Can you please tell me again which one this is? I just left the room.
This is consent agenda item memorandum of understanding between Calida Valley Junior High and Aha.
Okay, I'm here just to say about Aha. You know, Jennifer Freed, we know her background. I don't know how somebody like that can be put in charge of children. I don't know if she's still there. I don't know if she's still there, but I can say this. I can say that some of this material in this book, I'm going to read it to you. So what about what happens? Okay, living day to day. Sorry. So journal invitation, living in accordance with sexual values you hold, support, self-respect, and deeply influence the choices you make is also affects how you perceive things. Examining your values means understanding why and how. What about an experience you had that forever changed your sexual value you held? Could be a direct experience, a movie, or a book. What challenges you face? What challenges you face when thinking about sharing your sexual beliefs and values with others? How do you feel about reading and writing sexually explicit words? And then on the side, it has virginity, oral sex, masturbation, courtship, birth control, intercourse, sexual experimentation, et cetera. Okay, so we have lots of things here. Each of us have learned from family upbringings and social environments certain attitudes or opinions about sex and sexuality. We may disagree or agree. Sorting out the messages is helpful in coming to deeply know about our beliefs and attitudes about sex and sexual behavior. Kissing fondly, age of sex, first experience, how long to wait to have sex? Having sex, men and sex, women and sex, birth control, intimacy. Why is a school teaching this? Why do you have young 12-year-olds listening to this? This is junior high. I believe it's at junior high. If not, is it high school? Either way, I'm appalled by this. Living today, we receive thousands of messages about sex from a look exchanged between strangers. Select one or two of the most powerful messages you've received about engaging in foreplay or sexual fondling, and write down how you got those messages. Draw a simple picture depicting a struggle on an agreement about what you believe or to be true or script.
I'm, thank you. Next speaker is Sheridan Rosenberg.
Good evening. In June 25th of 2019, I spoke out against the AHA contract specifically about Jennifer Freed. After I saw a Facebook post that she's since taken down, which she posted June 14th of 2019 posing with Sex with Emily. It was a podcast she just finished doing with this very, it's, to say it's adult content is an understatement. I brought Laura will remember, as will others. I know Wendy Sims-Moten was there. Rose Munoz was there, but I made copies of what Sex with Emily, you know, podcast sort of menu and library. And I pointed out, and actually, I've listened to her podcast. She's done a number of them with this Emily woman, and it's deeply troubling. I invite all of you to explore this for yourselves. What I also did is I talked to my daughter, who complained bitterly about the AHA people interloping with the students on campus. It was totally inappropriate. In fact, one of her friends wrote this to her, wanted me to read it to the school board. I'm going to read it to you again. AHA forces students into uncomfortable situations where they're made to spill personal experiences or feelings in front of a classroom with students they might not want to console in. It's all thought to be for bonding and getting to know each other, but students did not once willingly participate and constantly complain about AHA. One upside was that the games they played with students, but those students became uncomfortable because it involved touching other students or being put in awkward situations where you're isolated in front of the class. Most of the counselors seem robotic at times and aren't very personable and even get frustrated when the students don't want to participate in it and made jokes about it. That's one thing, and I see Wendy nodding her head. That was not an isolated incident.
I'm, thank you. President Ford, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Okay, back to the consent agenda. Before I call for a motion, board members or Dr. Maldonado, are there any items on the consent agenda that require more information, comments, or discussion? Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, President Ford, I'd like to recuse myself from the consent agenda as there are several items there that may be perceived as a conflict of interest. So I will recuse myself from this item.
Thank you. So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
President Ford, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Capps, and a second?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Munoz. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
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 Aye. And all abstentions, please signify by saying aye. Thank you. This consent agenda passes unanimously. That takes us to the action agenda, and we'll move on to eight items for our consideration and approval. The first four items are for, no, I'm sorry, now they're down to two items for approvals of three student interdistrict transfers, two interdistrict, one interdistrict transfer, sorry. Things change right before the meeting. And one petition to readmit an expelled student. So first, item number one. I wonder if I may have, I don't think there are any public comments, right, Mr. Hill?
That's correct. No public comment.
Great. And this item was related to a student and has been discussed in closed session. So may I have a motion to approve item number one, interdistrict transfer appeal for 2122 school year, ED code 4660046611, case number 202122-t8.
I so move.
Thank you, Ms. Munoz. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Capps. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, this motion passes unanimously. And on to the, skipping on to number four, the board action for readmission of an expelled student, ED code 48918, case 201920-25. This also is an item that was discussed in closed session, and I wonder if I may have a motion to approve.
So moved, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sims-Moten. And how about a second?
Second.
Ms. Alvarez, great. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye, this motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number five, the approval of the memorandum of understanding between the California Department of Public Health and the Santa Barbara Unified School District for the COVID-19 testing program. I will turn it over to Dr. Wagonick. Oh, we do. Okay, sorry. But we usually do a presentation first? Okay, good. Okay. Dr. Wagonick.
Good evening, President Ford, Superintendent Maldonado, and board. We have before you tonight the memorandum of understanding between the district and the California Department of Public Health to conduct large-scale COVID-19 testing during the 2021-22 school year. I will be going into more detail about the testing plan in our regularly scheduled 7:00 p.m. report. But at this time, I will ask, I will open it up for any questions you have about the MOU itself.
I see none.
I see none from any board members? Oh, sorry, Ms. Alvarez.
Yes. Well, number one, thank you for doing that research and for giving us that thorough explanation. I just want to make sure that it is clear that this is at no cost to the district? Or is there a cost to the district?
There is absolutely zero cost to the district. In fact, in the contract itself, it states that CDPH will be responsible for the cost of the Abbott-Bynax Now tests.
Thank you.
I see no other further comments. So may I have a motion? Oh, no, I guess we'd, now- No public comments?
Yes. We have three public comment for this item. Cheryl Truski, Adrienne Rutland, Shelley Trust. And I will begin with Cheryl Truski.
Good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to just have you consider one idea that we're only hearing one side of the debate on this issue, and we're ignoring a great deal of information that is available to us. There's, viruses are always going to be with us. This virus has an animal reservoir, and it's why we can't avoid the influenza or the common cold. This virus is being treated differently from other viruses that have the same death rate. So the death rate for influenza is virtually the same as COVID-19. And we don't do any of these measures for the influenza virus. And so I just wish that we were focusing more on healthy treatments and focusing on improving the immune system and having more rational approaches than torturing our children with all these mandates and testing and masks and vaccinations. Vaccinations that don't work. It's been proven quite often that people that are fully vaccinated are getting COVID-19. So I don't understand why we're putting our children at risk unreasonably and irresponsibly. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adrienne Rutland.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, you may begin.
In regards to testing, I oppose all student COVID testing. All COVID tests are on emergency use authorization. Kids 0 to 18 have never been in an emergency. It is not a pandemic for that age group. Symptomatic transmission has been disproven. There is no need to test that age group to stop a so-called asymptomatic transmission. If a child opts out of testing, what are the consequences for not taking the test? If someone in his class or classes comes down with the COVID virus, what are the procedures? Shut down the school, disinfect the school, quarantine the school for 10 days? I see you all together. Since vaccinated can still transmit, did you all take the test before you got together? And why was that option not given to us so that we could be in the room with you, seeing you face to face? Like Alfred said, schools should be an extension of the family and not an extension of government. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shelley Trust.
Could you say that again, Mr. Hill?
Shelley Trust. Shelley Trust, can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me? My computer is not allowing me to unmute. There's something going on with the meeting.
We can hear you.
I just wanted to address the shot. I don't agree with the way that society is bullying others in society that are not interested in getting the shot, nor do they want their children to get the shot. It doesn't matter how many times you call it a vaccine. If it has not gone through the proper procedures for a vaccine, it is a shot. Much like the flu shot, much like the pneumonia shot, it is supposedly a choice to get the COVID shot. I believe that if you don't want your children to get this shot and they're not interested, I don't get the flu shot every fall. I don't get the pneumonia shot every fall. But yet, if you don't get the COVID shot, all of a sudden, there's something wrong with you. There's something toxic. And the bullying that is going on and now being extended to our kids in the school that they're going to have to get tested every week if they don't have the shot. Kids should only be treated or separated from the rest of the kids if they are sick. And there are many prescription treatments out there that are being withheld from the general public, which is insane, along with wearing the masks all the time. It is such a controlling, mind-bending, oppressive situation that I just want you to reconsider and stop running Ravshad over people that are trying to let their voices be heard in society. You vote whatever you want to vote, no matter who comes forward. I'm a parent. I'm a citizen. I live in Santa Barbara. I have children and grandchildren in the school system. Vote no on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Ford, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. And so now that we have heard the comments from Dr. Wagonick and public comments and a couple of questions on this item, board members may have a motion to approve item number five, the approval of the memorandum of understanding between the California Department of Public Health and Santa Barbara Unified School District for COVID-19 testing program.
I move with enthusiasm this motion.
Thank you. Ms. Capps, and a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. So all in favor on board members, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. This motion passes unanimously. No. On to number six, please, the recognition of Juneteenth as a paid holiday for June 2021. Dr. Beckio, please.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Superintendent Maldonado, board members.
Dr. Beckio, hold on just a second. Clear the door closed, please. Please continue.
Great, thank you. And good evening, board members. As you are aware, on June 17th, President Biden declared a federal holiday for Juneteenth. And that was a Thursday, which it was the Thursday before the June 18th holiday. This board's interest and the superintendent's interest in recognizing Juneteenth 2021, in your interest, we came together with CSEA to discuss how to compensate employees because we did have 11 and 12-month employees who were on contract that day. The attached agreement is the settlement or the MOU that we reached with CSEA. The highlights of it are that we have found, we did find some complications around payroll, quite a few complications around payroll, which kind of led both CSEA and the district in the direction of finding a day to declare a board holiday in recognition of Juneteenth. So we did find November 24th, which is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. That will actually be a workday for 12-month employees. So if the board were to approve this, we would have a board holiday there recognizing Juneteenth 2021 for 12-month employees. That is not a workday for 11-month employees, and we have about 25 11-month employees. So the solution we came up with was a floater holiday that they could use sometime before, I believe it was before June 1st. It's stated in the agreement, and that they would have that approved by their supervisor. So those are the highlights of this agreement, and I'm asking for the board to consider this and approve this MOU.
Thank you so much. Mr. Hill, are there any public comments on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. Then, board members, do you have any further questions or comments?
Just to express full support for Juneteenth being a paid holiday, and I appreciate that we're taking this step.
Thanks. Ms. Alvarez?
And thank you, Dr. Beckio. I do appreciate every, all the complexities that you mentioned, not to mention that it's a different fiscal year, so I think this is a great solution. So thank you for bringing that forward.
And Ms. Sims-Moten?
Yes, I also want to express my gratitude for recognizing the holiday and recognizing the work, what we need to do to make sure that they, obviously, the employees were recognized for their work in that day. So just expressing my gratitude for holding this up as a holiday as part of this district.
Excellent. Thank you. Seeing no other, oh, Ms. Munoz. Seeing no other, oh, Ms. Munoz.
Sorry, along with my fellow board members, I would also, you know, have full support for Juneteenth as a paid holiday for our employees.
Thanks so much. And Mr. Kelly?
Along with other board members, I also express my support.
Thanks. And Dr. Beckio, thanks for working this out with the employees. And so now it is time for me to ask for a motion to approve item number six, recognition of Juneteenth as a paid holiday for June 2021.
So moved with the fact that hopefully everybody gets an opportunity to educate themselves about Juneteenth, what it actually means. So I move with the gratitude with this.
Outstanding, thank you. And a second, Ms. Alvarez?
I second.
Excellent. And so now, all in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. This motion passes unanimously. We're now on to number seven on the action agenda, the approval of amendments to Board Policy 6158, independent study as required by Assembly Bill 130. Ms. Carey?
There we go. Good evening, President Ford, members of the board, Dr. Maldonado. Thank you, President Ford, for reading the title of this item because we are bringing to you a board policy that we are required to have you consider and hopefully support tonight, and that is a requirement of Assembly Bill 130. As you can see in the attachment, there is an extensive and technical board policy language that we are already busily implementing. I'd like to just express my appreciation to the staff at Alta Vista for their collaboration and helping us to execute on Assembly Bill 130, which provides independent study as an option for students whose health, as determined by the parent, precludes them from participating in in-person instruction this upcoming school year. What I think is the best thing to do is to allow you to just ask us any questions you may have, and thanks for your consideration.
Thanks so much. We had lots of things to look over, and I appreciate the, all the detail that was given to the board members. Ms. Trujillo, are there any public comments on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. Then, board members, do you have any further questions or comments about independent study? Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, one question. So this is the new, the new independent study based on the student's health and that they prefer instruction away from the classroom. How about the old independent study? Is that still in this policy that we are approving? That still remains so parents still have that option in case they're gone for another reason and then they want to come back to the classroom?
Yes, so the independent study program as people know it is still in existence, and this board policy does cover that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Seeing none, I would like to ask for a motion to approve item number seven, approval of amendments to Board Policy 6158, independent study as required by Assembly Bill 130, 130. Thank you, Ms. Munoz. And how about a second? Ms. Capps, thank you very much. Board members, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. This motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. And now we're on to number eight, which is the approval of platform renewals for the 2021-22 school year. Shall I turn this over to you, Ms. Loffridge? Yes.
Okay. Good evening, President Ford, board members, Dr. Maldonado. I am very pleased to bring you a bundled package of our platforms for renewal, and I want to thank our collaboration between the Ed Services Department and the Educational Technology Department because we went through and vetted all of the platforms that we use, recognizing that last year, because of the pandemic, we added additional platforms to meet the need. We looked at usage of the platforms, we looked at student outcomes, and the real question we asked ourselves was, what kind of data can we get to inform instruction? And how is this moving the needle for us? And if it wasn't, then we did not bring it to this bundled package. As you know, we are being very conscientious in the contracts that we bring to you for approval, and we want to make sure that the effectiveness is a result in student outcomes. As such, we were able to save about $252,000, or $255,242 to be exact, and we are requesting for the bundled package of platforms to be used. We grouped them for your ease into three different categories. The first is essential to do business. So for example, if we're going to communicate effectively with families about student grades and keep meaningful grade books and give feedback to students, we need something like Canvas. If we're going to have libraries that can check out books, they need something like Destiny Ballot. The next category was those that are part of approved courses or pathways. And I'm very proud of the work that Tiffany Carson did to bring all of the CTE components together into one comprehensive report. And lastly, we looked at, the last category was acceleration of student learning. So you may have been at a board presentation on something like Lexia, which is used in the elementary schools to promote reading growth, has a long track record with our district, and is individualized based on students' performance in that platform. So we looked at student acceleration and how that data could inform instruction. So we also asked our vendors to tell us what reports we could get and generate and how that could help our teachers strategically plan and group. Because if we are putting students on that device, we want to make sure that we are using that data in a meaningful way so that when they are all together doing in-person learning this year, they can focus on really what strategies and skills and standards we need to hit. So be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Brian Rouse is here with me as well.
Ms. Trujillo, are there any public comments?
No public comment.
Thank you very much. Then we'll go to Ms. Sims-Moten.
Yes, thank you. I am glad to see that there's savings going on. I always love to see that being efficiency with our dollars. I did have a question, if we could be a little bit more specific with regards to the funding sources, do we have specifically where those funding is coming from? And the reason that I'm asking that, because if in that funding, in those various funding sources, if there's one-time funding, that this is something we need to go ongoing, I'd like to make sure that that's real clear, if we might have to fill some gaps because there's some, there's some one-time funding in those funding sources.
Yes, there is a variety of funding sources on the chart that was included in the board summary. We list those as either general fund, ESER, ELO, or if it's supplemental funding, or if it's CTE grants, because some of them are grant-funded. But I can certainly follow up with you on any of those funding sources for any of the items.
Yeah, I think I just missed the attachment. I was just looking on your background, on your staff report, I just seen various there. So it was me, my error in missing that part. So you're fine.
Thanks so much. Any other comments from board members? Ms. Munoz, please.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Loffridge, Mr. Rouse, and Ms. Carson for all the effort in terms of how this is presented and organized. First of all, of course, to save so much money for the district and also to have it so straightforward presented to us as a board. Thank you.
I must agree. I thought it was really well thought out, very detailed and easy to follow. So thank you so much. With that, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve this item number eight, approval of platform renewals for the 21-22 school year.
So moved.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Munoz. And a second, Ms. Alvarez, thank you so much. So, board members, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. This motion passes unanimously. And just a little early, we're going to be able to move on to our regularly scheduled COVID-19 report. It's almost 7:00 PM, and I will ask Superintendent Maldonado and the executive cabinet to proceed with report number 25. It looks like Dr. Wagonick is ready to present.
Yes, I am. Thank you, again, President Ford, Dr. Maldonado, and the board. I bring to you, and I think there it is, COVID board report number 25. Next slide, please. So these, when we first brought the key factors to you in late May, early June, and said these are the things that we're really going to be focusing on in the coming school year, I wasn't quite sure how much we were going to need to do that. And even four or five weeks ago, things looked very, very different. But now, as I look at this, every single one of these pieces, these key factors, is absolutely essential to our work. Next slide, please. So as you can see from this, this piece of data from Santa Barbara County Public Health, the, the red line there is the rate of cases for unvaccinated individuals. The bottom blue line are vaccinated individuals. As of today, our case rate is 14.3 cases per 100,000. If we were back in the old tiered system, we would, we'd be minimizing our students in school, but we are open. The daily case rate of the unvaccinated is approaching 20 per 100,000, and this is a two-week delay in testing, so a reminder, or in reporting. So we, this is back on July 30th. But the unvaccinated rate is about five per 100,000. So the unvaccinated COVID rate in our county is approximately four times that the vaccinated rate. And we know from both anecdotal and quantitative data that those who are vaccinated experience a much different version of COVID than many who are unvaccinated experience. Next slide, please. Wanted to bring this back to you. This is the percent of individuals who are vaccinated by age in our county. You will see that the group that we are most interested in is that 12 to 15, 12 to 18 age group. And when I look to the 12 to 15 group, which is more inclusive of our students, we see that at this point, about 37% of students have completed vaccinations, and 47% are partially vaccinated, which means they should, we should see that number probably closer to that 40% completely vaccinated by our next board meeting is what I would think, hopefully. That's what we're looking for. That rate has gone up about 7% from two weeks ago when I last presented the data. Next slide. So we have been communicating with families about the importance of vaccination and sharing info about upcoming clinics around town. The number of clinics being offered locally has diminished this summer because there was a decrease in demand. Those are starting to ramp back up because the demand is going back up. We have applied with the California Department of Public Health for pop-up clinics. We had hoped to be able to provide those prior to the start of school. CDPH did get back to me yesterday, in fact, and said, they want to provide us with those pop-up clinics. They are looking for providers who are available to provide those locally. So when that becomes available, we will offer them. That's the latest news on that. Next slide, please. So a report on our, our own vaccination. So the number of teachers who have verified their vaccination or that are fully vaccinated as of today is 70%. Teachers do return to work in two days. They'll be back on Thursday. And we've had an additional 183 teachers verify their vaccination since August 6th, which was the last board meeting last Thursday. So each day, we're having more and more people verify. Next slide. So we have had five known staff cases of COVID onsite, meaning in district offices or on school sites, since July 1st. We did have one transmission that occurred on district site. We've been offering testing to known contacts and exposures. We will continue, obviously, to do that as the school year opens. Next slide. So want to go into really the meat of the presentation or the report tonight, which is our testing framework. We began looking at our testing framework two or three weeks ago and reviewed the variety of testing options. What we determined was of those four, of the four testing options that were available, what we really wanted to make sure we could do was, one, prevent outbreaks, and, two, help keep our kids in school. We worked so hard last year to get our students in school. We want to keep our students in school. So we chose our program based on those two aspects, knowing that when we're preventing outbreaks and we're working to keep kids in school, we'll have data that's going to help us keep track of COVID in our schools and district office, but we'll also be able to obviously respond to the outbreaks. So from July 22nd to July 29th, nearly 72,000 pediatric COVID cases occurred in our nation. In one week, 72,000 new pediatric cases were reported. That's almost twice as many as were reported the previous week. That, that fact compels us more to focus on what we're talking about tonight. Pediatric cases in that week accounted for 20% of all COVID cases in our nation. And states such as Louisiana, Florida, Texas, Missouri are experiencing high rates of COVID, pediatric COVID right now. Their hospitals are seeing double-digit numbers of pediatric cases. Thankfully, our country is not current, our county is not currently experiencing the high rates of COVID, especially the Delta variant, that these states are. And the most effective way to never have that experience is to focus on the proven mitigation strategies that we successfully utilized last spring. We need to recognize, and I think we have before, but I want to reiterate, we were successful in keeping COVID out of our schools. We had two investigations for possible outbreaks, and in neither case were there outbreaks in our schools. But we will continue. But we will continue to employ the masking, vaccinations, screening, and the testing of staff that we employed last year. But we're adding an additional layer of mitigation by testing our students. That's going to strengthen our efforts and keep schools open. So at the top of this slide, you see the phrase, "Helping Keep Kids in School." Again, as I said earlier, last year, we focused on getting students back to school. This year, our work is to keep kids in school, and we'll do that through the mitigation efforts I spoke of. We invite our entire community to join us in ending this pandemic once and for all. We have chosen to participate in the California Department of Public Health Testing Program, and tonight, I want to share with you the key aspects of that program. One moment, I'm having a, technical difficulties on my notes. All right, thank you. So let me tell you how that program is going to work. It, first, it's our belief that, based on the current research, and we know that can change. We have to stay nimble, and that's, that's what we've learned with COVID. But at this point, we believe that only unvaccinated students and staff should be part of our regular testing program. However, we do feel that it's important to do baseline testing of all students and staff. So that our, so our plan is to test approximately 12,500 students and 2,000 staff in the first two to three weeks of the school year. In addition to obviously providing support to those who test positive, and we hope that number is low, we'll use the data from this baseline testing to identify rates of COVID. So we'll use that data from that baseline test to see, you know, where are our positive tests? Are they amongst the vaccinated or the unvaccinated? We will look at age groups. We will look at adults versus students. We'll look at ethnicity and other demographics to make decisions about our testing plan going forward. Second, both students and staff will conduct anterior self-swabs in just about the first inch of both nostrils. In just a few minutes, you're going to see a video of six-year-olds conducting their own self-swabs. I know, and I can understand for parents, that without the information on this, it's, all sorts of images can come up in the head. So we really want to reassure folks of what this is. In June, I had to have a COVID test like I've never had, and I've had many. The one that went way up in, into the, I felt like it was in my sinus cavity. This is nowhere near that. So we want to reassure folks that even our six-year-olds will be able to do this. Next, we're opting to use antigen testing, what is commonly known as rapid testing. That'll be our primary mode. Antigen tests are less sensitive than molecular or PCR tests and may not detect infections in asymptomatic individuals. However, antigen tests are likely to detect, detect those who are the most infectious. So importantly, the Binax Now antigen test, which is one, the test we have already used on 3,000 athletes, with 3,000 athletes last spring, they're performed at the school site, and the results are available within 15 to 20 minutes. And for antigen testing to be most effective, testing should occur more frequently than molecular or PCR testing. So with the faster turnaround time for the antigen tests, we can limit transmission by more rapidly identifying infectious persons on campus. So in cases where the antigen test will, reveals a positive case, we will follow up by using that PCR molecular test. It is highly sensitive. It's unlikely to be falsely negative, and it's very specific, which means it's unlikely to be falsely positive. Molecular testing needs to be performed in specialized laboratories, and because of that, the results generally come back in one to two days. So we will use PCR Reflex when we have a positive case. But most of the testing, the vast majority, will be the antigen rapid test. And finally, just as is the case with other medical procedures, students, parents, or guardians must give consent for this testing to take place. For families who do not want to consent to testing, the district will be giving them the option of independent study through AltaVista. And finally, one thing that I'm very impressed with, and this is a change, is that parents or guardians will receive the results from primary.health of their student's test that same day. So while we will be calling parents immediately if there is a positive test, or alerting staff members if there's a positive test, parents will also be notified whether, regardless of whether it's negative or positive. Next slide, please. So I told you about the self-test, the antigen self-test. This is a video provided by the California Department of Health. This is actually was filmed, this little girl is the daughter of one of the nurses from California Department of Health, and it was filmed in her, I believe, kindergarten class. So if you'll go ahead and show the video. While they're getting this queued up, what I appreciate about this video, because it is filmed, intended to show to students, we're planning to create our own, both in English and Spanish, that are similar, but it really does, as you will hear and see, use very child-friendly terms, things that they are able to understand at a young age.
Can I have an update on what's happening with technology? Okay, thank you.
We can also continue.
Yeah, we could continue and you and come back to that.
Go to the next slide, and then we'll be back.
Yeah. Oh, there we go. Okay. What are we doing? Okay, next.
...streets and anterior nasal swab test, and was made to help instruct students to do this test on their own, to self-swab. To protect myself, the protective equipment, or PPE, I need are gloves, optional but recommended eye protection, such as goggles or face shield and a mask. Start by standing at least six feet apart from the other students. The teacher's going to help you wash your hands before you do the test or give you some hand sanitizer. First, we are going to hand you the swab. You're going to want to take the stick and be careful not to touch it with anything. You don't want to touch the soft part of the swab. That part needs to stay clean. You're going to hold it and wait for instructions, and then, when we say so and we are far enough away from you, we are going to have you take down your mask beneath your nose. You're going to take your swab and put it in the front part of your nose like you're picking your nose. We are trying to take a sample of your snot. You want to both twirl the swab around, as well as move the swab in a circle around in your nose, gently touching all sides of the inside of your nose at least four times. We are going to do this for a total of 15 seconds. So let's count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. Then, we will take it out and put it in the other side. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. Then, take your swab out and hold it without touching the soft part. Put your mask back on over your nose and wait patiently for one of the adults to take it and run the test.
So that was the, an example. So I hope that helps both the board and parents and staff out there see what's to be expected. Parents will know which days their students are being tested on. Will be on a regular schedule, and I think especially with younger ones or even older kids who need some preparation ahead of time, parents will be able to have that conversation. Remember, you're having, you're, you're doing your test today. So, and they can talk through that ahead of time if they like. So next slide, please.
Could you stay back on that timeframe and go over the timeline?
That's what I planned to be on, this one. Sorry. I didn't see that we had gone on. So, complete the application and attend a webinar. These are the steps for completing the process for launching the test program. We have completed our application, and I attended the webinar last week. We completed the MOU yesterday, but it's actually officially passed by the board tonight, so we are moving forward with that. They allowed us, once we let them know that the MOU was being brought to the board, to order our training kits and tests, so those were ordered yesterday. Once we receive approval from CDPH, which should be in the next two days, we can begin training of site personnel. And there will be teams of three to five individuals on each site who are trained to conduct the test. So while the students and staff do their own self-swab, personnel are needed to complete the other parts of the test and read them and, and make sure that they are safe. And we are shooting to begin testing the week of August 23rd. That is our goal. That's a lofty goal, but it's one that we need to meet, so we are working feverishly to make that happen. Next slide, please. And at this point, another layer of mitigation that is still important, and I think important at all times, is cleaning and disinfecting. I will turn the slide deck over to Mr. Vizelini.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Maldonado, and members of the public. As a reminder, we are continuing to follow the California Department of Public Health guidelines for cleaning and disinfecting. Currently, under normal conditions, we use standard cleaning products and standard cleaning methods, wiping down surfaces daily and hitting those high-touch areas like we always had. In the case of, in the instance of a positive case, we have our protocols in place. We have, well, excuse me, we'll evacuate the room. Our properly trained and equipped custodial staff will disinfect the area. We have a 30-minute contact time to ensure that our peroxide-based chemical does its job. We have signage that we install on the doors of the space so that uninformed people will not walk into the space, that will be able to be identified that there's disinfecting going on. And then, when the room is cleared for use, we have a process to notify the site administrator that the room is available. Next slide, please. Ventilation continues to be a very important part of our defense against COVID. As we know from the testing that we performed, our rooms are performing outstanding for almost all of our schools, so we continue to keep our doors and windows open. We continue to have fans running in classrooms, which provided, as the one you see in the picture. Our HVAC systems continue to run with the fans running continuously during the school day, and the air filters inside of those units are changed on a quarterly basis and more often as needed. Next slide, please. Just a last reminder of some safety measures that are still in place. We still have hand wash stations. We are just getting ready to rent and deliver some more that were taken back over the summer, so we didn't incur that cost all summer long, but those are being returned by the end of the week, so they will be there for the beginning of school. We still have our sanit, hand sanitizer dispensers and wipes located all over the district in classrooms and restrooms and office spaces, and we have plenty of backup material for refills of those items. Our bottle filling stations are continuing to be important. We've installed an additional 20 over the summer, and we purchased many more. We have a schedule that we're rolling out, and we're trying to get those out as much as possible. One of the steps we took is to purchase a different type of bottle filler that is easier to install, so we pay a little more on the front end, but we don't incur the same installation costs, but we're able to get them installed quicker. So in places where it's challenging to install the typical one that you see in the lower right corner, we'll be able to put a freestanding unit that'll go in in a couple of days instead of a couple of weeks. So we're excited about that. We still have our Plexiglas partitions that were, that were constructed and placed in public areas, so all of our desks in those types of areas are still there, and of course, we still have extra masks available. So we're in pretty good shape with all of our products. We have backup for our disinfectant. We have all of our gear still at all of our schools, so that if we do get a positive case, we aren't going to have to go out and find things to get it done. It's all at the school sites. The custodians are all continuing to stay trained, and we feel like we're in a pretty good spot. With that, I would like to give it back to Dr. Wagenek, if she has any closing states, statements, excuse me.
My closing statement on this would be that, I, I, my entire life, have heard my parents share stories of being children during World War II, ration books, and little sacrifices that they had to make as children. But, but they don't talk about the fact, it wasn't, they don't talk about the trauma. They talk about how they were able to contribute to the effort. And what I really think about here is, our, our children can do this. They can contribute to the effort, and it's not just about them contributing to the effort, it's about all of us contributing to the effort, but it's also about keeping them safe. And as we said, keeping our kids in school. So with that, I want to let the board know that I appreciate the efforts that you're making every day, keep our kids in school, and I invite the rest of the community to work with us to keep our kids in school. Thank you. And at this point, I'll turn it back over to President Ford.
Thank you so much, Dr. Wagenek. That was a great example, and I, I feel so strongly how much we are grateful to you for sticking with this and pushing on and pushing forward. I honestly believe that nothing could be more important, so thank you so much. Mr. Hio, do we have any public comments on this report item?
Thank you, President Ford. We do have 21 public comments on this item. I will start naming the first five. Douglas McKenzie, Sybil Gilbertson, Danny Blunk, Shelley Trust, Elizabeth Bache, and I will begin with Douglas McKenzie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, thank you. My name is Doug McKenzie. I'm a, I'm a physician and surgeon in Santa Barbara. It's time to realize, like some countries are, that SARS-CoV-2, the virus that causes COVID, COVID-19, is endemic. We're not going to get to zero COVID, ever. We can't make it disappear with a vaccine, especially one that might improve symptoms, but as we're seeing, will not stop reinfection or transmission. And despite the hype from politicians in the media, public health officials and physicians should have known this from the conclusions of the original studies. As far as variants know, it's not the unvaccinated's fault. It's the nature of a respiratory virus and the limitations of these vaccines. They actually risk creating more virulent escape mutations. Think about over-prescribing of antibiotics and the emergence of resistant bacteria. It's the same concept. More worrisome than the virus, which has barely budged all-cause mortality, is the lack of consideration of the profound economic and psychological costs of unscientific, often fanatical policies. As we just saw, unnecessary over-testing now being implemented for children. Vaccination in younger and younger people where the harms from the vaccine far outweigh the harms of the disease? The obsession for masking? I see kids outside playing sports wearing masks. It's absurd. There is no science or logic to support that. I worry about society's descent into a mass psychosis, trying to reach an impossible goal of eradicating COVID. Brace yourself for evermore cycles of fear and confusion as the next variant arises and the vilification of people unwilling to subject themselves to coerced vaccinations. Acts are more hateful. This can't end well unless more people wake up. Fortunately, as we see from the massive protests in the UK and France, the burning of vaccine passports in Italy, the vindication of ivermectin as a safe and effective treatment, people are waking up. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sybil Gilbertson.
Could you repeat yourself, please, Mr. Hio?
Sybil Gilbertson.
Can you please unmute? There you go. Hello, sorry. Hi, my name is, hi, my name is Sybil Gilbertson. I have a longtime background in Santa Barbara as a dancer and an artist. I'm currently working as an associate marriage and family therapist. I have two young sons in the school district. And I want to speak tonight to the ideas of modeling and boundaries as we try to stand up for our children and teach them about informed consent, choice, listening to their inner guidance, their intuition, their deeper sense of knowing what is right for them. The boundaries stop and begin at their own bodies. As much as we are all part of the collective, we are also individuals and must have the right, moving forward in a wise world, to know what our inner guidance is telling us. I'll just close, that's all I want to say. Well, there's so much more. And, and I want to just echo the person before me who spoke about the ongoing confusion that is bringing about to these children during these times. We are all familiar with the gesture of two hands being put together, the prayer. I want to just kind of point out that in the thousands and thousands of year-old yoga sutras, that this mudra or gesture all over the world for eternity is about unity and coming together. That one hand is about the individual and one hand is about the collective. And they are not mutually exclusive. They must work together. We must have choice. We must model and teach our children to have a sense of their own deeper knowing and intuition if we want children who will support the world as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dani Blanc.
Hello. Hi, I first time I say this is infuriating. I'm a mother and I'm super angry right now. I have my son taxi me. Mom, can I go to school? I say, no, you're not going to be discriminated and you're not going to have a medical procedure every week so you can study. And I also want to remind you, you are not a doctor, a scientist, and you may, your main goal should be provide education for the kids. How about improve our educating your kids and that let the medical decisions to their parents? See, it's a lot of information, bring this label misinformation. I'll talk about the law. First coercion is not consent. Mandates, mandates are against the law. It is violation of a new code, violation of AMA medical ethics and basic human rights. The Health and Safety Code number 24172 says, experiment subjects bill of rights. Be given the opportunity to decide to consent or not to consent to a medical experiment without intervention of any element of force, fraud, deceit, duress, coercion, or undue influence on the subject's decision. Testing it is a medical experiment. I believe these kids will be tested under duress. I also want to challenge you to prove me that COVID vaccine is safe. How about you show us the ingredients in the vaccine and the facts that make those ingredients safe? You can prove that vaccine is effective when even the CDC is admitting that the areas with the most vaccination rates are also the most affected by COVID. By the way, the CDC is not an independent agency. It is a vaccine company. The CDC owes over 20 vaccine patents. It sells about $4.6 billion of vaccines every year, says Robert Kennedy Jr. Again, this is not about kids' health, but about money. I want to read some facts for you so later on, you cannot say you did not know. There is no isolated certified reference materials for COVID-19. FDA admits.
Time, thank you. Our next speaker is Shelley Trust. Ms. Shelley Trust, can you unmute yourself? One moment. Ms. Shelley Trust, can you, can you hear us? I will come back to her. I will go on to the next speaker, Elizabeth Pichay. And she does not appear to be online. So I will call on the next five speakers. I will come back to them. Alexandra Carswell, Kimberly West, Alfred Pomerlo, Barbara Battistini, and Sky Byron.
And I will begin with Alexander Carswell. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to say I'm a medical provider in Santa Barbara and I'm against the mandate of any medical procedure. The guidelines that I recently received for the 2122 Santa Barbara school year, put forth by the district, do not seem to make any sense because even the CDC and the WHO have come out to say that getting shots does not stop someone from getting or transmitting the clinical syndrome known as COVID-19 and hence does not confer protection to others. And in your guidelines, I see the main point being protecting the vulnerable and those that are not yet eligible for these shots. Even the WHO official said that people cannot feel safe just because they have had two doses. They still need to protect themselves. So why are we pretending that these shots are the be-all and end-all and that we are celebrating the rates of people that are getting these shots when this is not the answer for our kids to move forward in a safe way? And it's not the answer for our communities to overcome this COVID-19 situation as our previous physician has already said. So why would you say that your strategies are aimed at protecting those that have not had the shot or are ineligible for the shot when the shot does not confer that kind of protection? Why would you also require kids and staff to test weekly if they have no symptoms? Our governmental institutions have already conceded that PCR testing is inaccurate in detecting active infections. So why does that help anyone? It'll only isolate and shame those that choose not to get the shots and disrupt our children's ability to access their education. The CDC has already announced that they're phasing out PCR testing. They're going to withdraw the PCR's emergency use authorization December 31st of 2021. So why are we using it now when our governmental institutions are saying it is ineffective? And for.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kim West.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you may begin.
I just want to make sure that I've got four minutes here. Sandra was supposed to combine my time.
I'm sorry, there are only two minutes on this.
That's not, no, okay. You, you guys blew it all again on that, I guess. The fact that you won't open your chambers so that we can at least come inside and talk to you in person shows really poor communication on your part. I was going to use this time to tell my story of distance learning over the last year and a half. I was going to tell you about how my kids, nine and six, have had to go back and forth from their mom's house to my house, carrying a school desk worth of stuff back and forth every two days. Two different teaching styles, two different learning environments, two different levels of internet service. And then I thought about speaking to you on all the data on masks and how harmful they are to our kids. But I've decided to take a different approach. I want to remind you who you work for. You work for us, the people. The people. Those chambers that you kept us out of tonight, they're paid for by us, the people. Your job in this situation is to be a child education professional and do right by our kids. So why are all these people lined up out here to speak to you about just that, doing right by our kids? I also want to bring to your attention that the COVID-19 information on the district website is horribly outdated. Your COVID safety plan was updated April of 2021 and the school guidance checklist is from January 2021. Whose job is that? I called about that in July and clearly the woman I spoke to hung up the phone and went back to filing her nails. There's been a lot of new data since January and April of 2021 and more doses of the cure have been administered. And more importantly, time has shown us all exactly what to fear concerning this virus. The thing I fear the most is government. As far as I can tell, government is the virus. Do any of you have kids? If so, do you like masking your kids? Do you honestly believe that a cloth mask is protecting our kids? Do you honestly believe that a cloth mask is protecting you? Why do you, you see the need to fight these health orders that are not based in science? I want my kids to go to school in person. I really do. But I'm against the idea of sending them in masks. And part of the reason we send our kids to school is for the social education. Masks have gone, masks have had an effect on the social environment among adults. How do you think it's, no, I, I was promised four minutes. I emailed back and forth with Sandra six times today and.
All right. Our next speaker is Alfred Pomerlo.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So this is directed to Dr. Wagenhoff, Wagenhoff. In response to your report on COVID-19, do you know that the CDC is discontinuing the use of PCR as, as the previous speaker talked about? Because the CPR does not detect SARS-CoV-19 coronavirus in someone's system. If you don't know that, you're not doing your research and should not have the position you're holding. With all due respect, it seems to me that you really don't understand what a PCR test is and how it works. It reads a segment of messenger RNA and not necessarily coronavirus. It will read any segment. It is mostly adjusted to such a level that it will look through trillions of samples. Ultimately, it finds something. It does not read the presence of Corona. The PCR inventor himself said that it should never be used to diagnose. Antigen testing from saliva does not identify the type of infection people have. It only measures elevated levels of antigens and cannot tell you the causative factor. It, it is not a reliable test. Why would you report what unreliable, most false statistics to people based on erroneous testing procedures? Would a pressing, a testing procedure that has now been rejected by the CDC as an inaccurate? What is your purpose for doing this? Do you know that the virus has never been called as a true causative factor of disease or death in anyone supposedly infected? Why do you make children stick swabs into their noses? This is a violation. Immunity actually depends on us making physical contact with each other, breathing and sharing each other's air. You need to renew, you need to review everything you are presenting. I'm happy to come to your meetings, into your schools and teach this. Why keep kids in school when you imprison them by masks, by lockdowns? What you are not knowledgeable and really should be putting into, energy into is what consists of good immunity. How do humans stay healthy? It is through good food, good lifestyle, et cetera.
Time, thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Sky Byron.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm the mother of two young boys and I speak today for them and for all the children of Santa Barbara who wish to be educated without being coerced into taking a medical product. The latest VAERS reports released by the CDC shows over 400, 545,000 adverse events from all age groups following COVID shots, including 12,366 deaths and over 70,000 serious injuries. This is between December 14th, 2020 and July 30th, 2021. While a VAERS report does not prove causation, if any other drug or medical product had been associated with this many reports of injuries and deaths, it would have been pulled from the market immediately. From the VAERS data, we already know these shots are not safe. In seven months of COVID shots, there are double the reported adverse events than from all other vaccines combined for the past 30 years. These reports are not just hundreds of thousands of coincidences. I challenge you to spend just one hour reading VAERS reports on COVID shot injuries and deaths and see if you think they seem like coincidences. Whether the shots are effective or not is completely irrelevant because even if they were 100% effective at preventing infection, transmission and death based on the VAERS data, which is known to be grossly under-reported, they are the most dangerous shots ever released to the public. And without question, they should be immediately discontinued worldwide. The idea of mandating such unsafe medical products for children who according to the CDC have a 99.998% chance of surviving a COVID diagnosis in order for them to be educated is horrifying. There is no medical justification for mandating these shots. You risk harming and even killing the children you were charged to protect. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next five speakers are Kevin McKemmy, Juliet Biscoff, Janet Price, Dani Blanc, David Medigan. And I will begin with Kevin McKemmy.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
As we enter a new school year, we all are faced with choices, including the choice of vaccinations for our youth or weekly COVID testing. As our scientific community learns more about these vaccines, we understand that they are not the sole cure that we have been led to believe. Breakthrough cases, virus mutations, and record-breaking adverse reactions are proving the shortcomings of the current COVID vaccination program. Case in point, a biodistribution study of the Pfizer vaccine released earlier this summer. Unlike other vaccines, this vaccine does not stay localized at the injection site, but rather enters the bloodstream, allowing the spike protein element to flow freely through the body and into the organs. In this study, scientists reported significant accumulation of the spike protein in the liver, spleen, bone marrow in shockingly high concentrations in the ovaries. We and our scientific community currently have no way of predicting whether or not this free-flowing injectable spike protein will have long-term effects on our population. Adding to the concern through extensive studying of COVID-19, scientists have discovered that the spike protein is in fact a vascular toxin itself, known to be the cause of clots and other cardiovascular diseases and vascular complications. It's imperative to understand that our scientific leaders have acknowledged that this vaccine was never intended to stop the infection of SARS-CoV-2. It was designed to reduce the complications and symptoms of COVID-19. These, the disease caused by SARS-CoV-2. Essentially, this vaccine does not stop transmission. And even if fully vaccinated, our children are still as likely to spread it as any asymptomatic case previously. With this information, I implore you, our leadership, to abandon a deliberately divisive and segregationist approach by exclusively testing the unvaccinated children. If executed, this policy will not help stopping the spread, but it will foster division among start children, encouraging individuals to shame, ridicule, embarrass, and even bully each other for being different. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Juliet Biscoff.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, members of the Santa Barbara Unified School Board for listening to. Thank you, members of the Santa Barbara Unified School Board, for listening to me. I'm a local resident of Santa Barbara High School and UCSB. I'm here to discuss the policy of pushing the COVID-19 shots on our schoolchildren. For science to advance, it needs to review all the data as it comes in. We need to ask why data from top-flight doctors and virologists is being suppressed on most social media platforms. This is not science, it's censorship. It has no place here in America. Here, we celebrate the freedom to choose for ourselves and for our own bodies. These are violations of Nuremberg codes and many other ethics to push this shot. Adults are at the age of consent, children are not. The CDC shows that children 17 and under only account for .0057 of deaths from COVID. The pharmaceutical companies require a COVID release that exonerates them from all damages. The warnings now include serious heart issues. Many doctors and experts worldwide agree that there are other effective treatments like ivermectin for COVID, other than these shots. Why in the world would we want to take a risk with our children with vaccines, which even a few years ago would have been banned for their high injury and death rates? I am not anti-safe vaccine. But now it's personal. Besides my two girlfriends suffering from racing heartbeats of over 180 and massive fatigue, my own mother was paralyzed for six hours, unable to blink, speak, or move. And then my cousin, my namesake, a graduate of San Ynez High School who earned a teaching degree, was talked into getting the COVID shot she didn't want.
I'm.
She received the shot and she died last night.
Thank you.
Please don't put.
Next speaker is Janet Price.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. I'm a retired teacher and I, can you hear me okay? Okay, good. I felt compelled to speak on the mask and vaccine mandates for students and teachers. I'm really impressed by the program you have put up to mitigate and take care of COVID in the schools. Thank you for all your hard work for that. But I am concerned about masks for children, especially young children, because it's just not healthy for them. Psychologists say that because they are still developing communication skills, mask-wearing means that they cannot see nor easily use facial expressions with each other, which are a huge part of nonverbal communications. They're not also healthy, especially for young children who don't always wear the mask properly, who touch their face and fiddle with them all day long. Masks worn by six children in Gainesville, Florida, were sent to a lab for a culture. Five masks had bacteria, parasites, and fungi. Three had dangerous pathogens and pneumonia-causing bacteria. They also found TB, meningitis, sepsis, and bloodstream infections on these masks. Ew. You know, so I just read an article that cites 47 studies from the US and other countries that show masks don't protect against COVID-19. This virus is so small that it easily penetrates masks. N95 masks work best, but by no means are 100%. Medical masks are negligible, and cloth is no protection at all. More important is the air quality of the building, and I'm glad to see that you guys are addressing this matter in the classrooms. Thank you. I just wonder about students with asthma and other respiratory issues for whom wearing masks is extra unhealthy. Masks are harmful to children, and they don't work, and we shouldn't mandate them. Also, vaccines, I'm not against vaccines, but mandating vaccines that are not yet approved by the FDA and which are injections involving experimental mRNA is not only irresponsible, but reminds me of totalitarian governments of the past. CDC and VAERS numbers of deaths.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Madigan. David Madigan is not online. I will call on the next five speakers. Justin West, Lisa Ostendorf, Amy Smith, Justin Shores, Maria Kastner, and Bea Saunders. I will begin with Justin West.
See, school board, four minutes is four minutes. I'm gonna get my four minutes. Mr. Hilo, thank you so much for emailing me all day long to set up my four minutes. So, you guys, the bottom line is, schools where our kids go to create their futures, both in an educational sense and in a social sense, they become themselves in school. That's their little chance as kids to live an independent life and to start to establish decision-making skills, to make friends, to play sports, to get into relationships. For some kids, school is the only normal place they have. Why in the world have you taken that from them? Why in the world do you want to compromise that experience for them by forcing them to wear a muzzle? And please don't say because of science. Now, that concludes my written statement, and I just want to say, based on the COVID information that was given to us at the beginning of this agenda item, it really seems as though the school board watches too much CNN. I literally heard all of those talking points on CNN this morning. It makes me sick. You guys need to get it together. Let our kids go to school. Let our kids pursue normal lives, because this is not normal. What you're doing is not normal. You guys are supposed to be education professionals. This is not normal. This is not normal for our kids. Admit that. When you sleep tonight, I want you to hear my voice. This is not normal. This is not normal. Shame on you, school district. Shame on you. When your head hits the pillow tonight, think of my voice. Parents, parents listening at home, I implore you, hold your kids back from school the first two weeks. We must protest these measures. Parents listening at home, do not send your kids to school. Do not send your kids to school. Shame on you, school board. Hear my voice tonight when you go to bed. Shame on you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Ostendorf.
Can you hear me? Hi, can you hear me? Okay, good evening. I am extremely concerned about the COVID vaccine mandates just passed for teachers in the school district. Do I need to remind the board about what happened 80 years ago in Nazi Germany? What happened was the government wanted to exterminate a certain group of people and any other government dissidents that did not agree with its narrative. People were separated by their status and were marked with a yellow star. These people were segregated and discriminated against by not only the government, but the rest of the population. You know the rest of the story. Do you really want to set up a two-class system within the teachers' union? Do you want only the unvaccinated to be separated out and forced to take unproven tests and wear dangerous masks and cause bias and discrimination in your ranks? Do you really think this is the purview of the school board to intervene in and recommend experimental medical treatments when you are not doctors? Your jobs as board members are to make our schools a great learning environment for our children and to keep private medical choices and personal politics out of the classroom. We will not stand for elected officials breaching the God-given and constitutional rights to bodily integrity and freedom of choice. And don't tell me that you can choose another school to go to when my tax dollars are, as an American citizen, are paying your salaries. If you do not reverse your stances on forced masking, tests, and, quote, vaccinations of teachers and children, you are asking to be voted out or recalled by the people. My children were both damaged by vaccines that they, quote, "needed" to attend your schools. And we will not stand for more abuse heaped onto our most valuable assets, our future generation. Do the right thing and reverse any and all COVID mandates.
Time. Our next speaker is Amy Smith.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd just like to point out that I am a doctor. I have a PhD in material science, and I've worked in quality control, so I have experience looking at data and understanding and analyzing data, and I worked under a statistician, which was a great opportunity. But I'm very concerned about the way data is being cherry-picked to mislead and create a climate of fear. This, according to a world-class epidemiologist at Stanford, John Ioannidis, I can't pronounce his name very well, but he is a world-class epidemiologist. He very early on said that this rises to the level of a bad flu, and not 1919 flu, but a bad typical flu year, like in recent times. And we're doing all of these extreme measures. And if you look at the graph, unfortunately, we don't have the update. The data graph was not published, the one that was used in the presentation, but it has data looking at the vaccinated and the unvaccinated, starting on May 15th and going through July 19th. And it's showing a much lower rate of cases in the vaccinated. But are you aware that on May 1st, the CDC changed how it recorded cases? If you have a positive PCR test and you are not vaccinated, you get counted as a case. If you have a positive PCR test and you're vaccinated, you don't get counted as a case unless you are actually hospitalized or die. So that is called fraud, my friends. That is not honest science. So this data, this charts in front of you that look very scary with the unvaccinated looking like the danger people, is fraudulent and dishonest. Now you want to institute mass testing with something that was quantified by the PCR test. So it's not as good as the PCR test, and the PCR test is being phased out because it was never accurate. It always had a false positive rate. The cycle threshold that was used to quantify and characterize the test you plan to use this year.
Time. Thank you. Next speaker is Justin Shores.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. The Santa Barbara Unified School Board continues to ignore public input, and they make their own biased ideological decisions, no matter what the cost to education. They allow teachers and staff to come to board meetings and to berate parents and cheer their biased decisions, and then they even thank them by name. The COVID restrictions have allowed them to keep parents away from the table. They will keep it like this as long as possible. They now have the tool of labeling any dissent as misinformation and ignore facts, even from the CDC and others if it goes against their ideology. The Santa Barbara Public School System is neglecting and abusing our children with their political agenda. They have created a problem by not allowing our children to come on campus, even though other local schools did. And now they want to use the mental health crisis they created to push students and staff into experimental treatments. They ignore science, and when asked to provide data, they have no data to support it. Multiple board members are pledged to a political party, and they have traded their voice for power. They do whatever their party tells them to. We saw that the biggest way possible last week with the sweeping mandates coming from all the local boards. This coordinated attack was a power grab and a push by the federal government to break the will of people with dissenting opinions. I hope everyone can enthusiastically help recall this school board. We are done.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Barbara Bettistini. Ms. Bettistini, can you unmute yourself?
Hi. This is, yeah, thank you. I just want to say, putting masks on children that aren't even susceptible for getting sick is tyranny. And you're putting children in lockstep and preparing them for something else. This is an agenda, and we are here to say, we, the people, do not want this for our kids. You don't listen to us. You haven't listened to us. We've been down this road before, but we are going to fight because we will fight for children and their innocence. They do not belong to be masked. They do not belong to have to go through testing. This is so unnecessary. And I think the whole world's watching right now, and there are 110,000 doctors that are speaking about this, and it is becoming world knowledge. So get with the program and stop trying to take our children away from parents and making decisions that do not belong to the board. Our education system comes from our government, and guess what? We need to change our government. We need a government that will listen to the people once again. We are people who believe in the Constitution. We are people that believe that we are one nation under God. We are not under a man, we are under God. So I pray that you do the right thing, because everyone will be held accountable. There's no more for black being called white, white called black, right, wrong, wrong, right. We are standing, and we will not have a twisted agenda placed on our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maria Kastner.
Hi, my name is Maria Kastner. I think my name will be known to the board, so I don't have to introduce myself. I'm going to read my statement. We have seen a rush to its mandates across our system of checks and balances since the Biden DOJ came out with their legal opinion that the government can force vaccine mandates on federal government agencies for products that are on emergency use authorization status, which directly contradict the wording in 21 U.S. Code created by Congress, the Authorization for Medical Products for Use in Emergencies, which clearly states of the opinion to accept or refuse administration of the product, of the consequences, if any, of refusing administration of the product and of the alternatives to the product that are available and to their benefits and risks. The state of California gives recommendations and guidance to the counties, which are suggestive measures. Counties form policies based on their suggestive measures since local conditions like weather, population density, and community resources vary from county to county. Gavin Newsom declared a state of emergency in March 2020, yet hospitals around the state were laying off workers at the time. He continued to cling to the Emergency Powers Act and somehow believes that a state of emergency can be indefinite in duration in case we have future outbreaks of COVID-19, which is contradictory to California Emergency Service Act. Governor Newsom signed an executive order on June 18, 2021, while dropping mask mandates, enabling OSHA revisions to take effect without the normal 10-day review period by the Office of Administrative Law. According to the California Emergency Service Act, a state of emergency can only be called if the threat overwhelms the current resources of the state. In the meanwhile, the CDC grouped all pneumonia, influenza, and COVID deaths together. They're called the Big Dust. The PCR test was never intended as a diagnostic tool, and the parameters for the test were changed after vaccination started. Counties around the country have been liberty counting COVID deaths and are on record for doing so.
Time. Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Bea Saunders.
Hi, I'm the parent of a third grader in the school district. He spent all last year in distant learning, and this week marks 17 months since he was last in a classroom. He's excited to go back and needs to be around other children, and yet we are all worried. The daily numbers of COVID-19 cases and local positivity rates are higher than they were a year ago, and the Delta variant is a far nastier virus. As infectious as chickenpox, three times more so than the common cold. It is hard to understand the push to educate all children indoors at this time. Masks will undoubtedly help, and I sincerely hope there is no relaxing of this mandate. Maintaining social distance will also help, but the science is very clear that outdoors consistently wins over indoors. I am really disappointed that more has not been made of the opportunity to develop outdoor classrooms. We live in a climate where this could so easily be adopted. With the exception of wildfire smoke, a sun hat or sweater would mitigate most problems. What is the opposition to doing this, given how much difference we know it can make? Additionally, I hope all staff will be regularly tested, ideally more than once a week, regardless of vaccination status. Unfortunately, it is clear that fully vaccinated people can still acquire this virus, harbor substantial viral load, and pass it on to others. Therefore, everyone who is around our unvaccinated and vulnerable children must be tested. It saddens me that we're still so limited in our testing capabilities when we know this can genuinely identify and reduce community spread. when we know this can genuinely identify and reduce community spread. So please, keep the masks, increase the testing, and look again at outdoor classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. President Ford, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you, Dr. Wagenek, for your detailed report. And I wonder if there are any board comments or questions. Ms. Alvarez, please.
First of all, again, thank you, Dr. Wagenek. I know this takes a lot of time and a lot of effort, so I thank you for all that you do. I know that fellow board members and I share the sentiment that our number one job is to do everything we can to keep children and staff safe. And even before academic achievement, our number one job is safety and to do the best of our ability so that children and staff are safe. And from what I heard you in your report, if I summarize all the layers that we do for safety, we are going to continue, of course, our, the masking, the hygiene, which is the cleaning, the ventilation, the disinfecting. In addition to that, of course, now is the new layer is the testing. And such as the vaccinations and the testing, none of those are forced onto anyone. You mentioned how the the parent consent is needed for the testing of students, and the parents have the option to opt out. In addition to that, the vaccinations of staff, no one is mandated, no one is forced to do that. There's, there's, those are, of course, highly recommended. None of those are forced. And what I heard you say is that we are following the California Department of Public Health, the Center for Disease Control, the Santa Barbara Public Health Guidance. And in addition to that, what we have, I think it's our own personal experience, our own personal experience of last year, when kids were in school, the data that you shared with us, the precautions that we put in place, and of course, our own personal experience. I've been tested weekly for a long, long time. I've had the vaccine. I've had three family members die because of COVID and the fact that they did not have access to the vaccine. So we also have that as a data point. One question that I do have for you, and I'm sorry if I missed this in your presentation, is the goal, which is a great goal, to test 12,500 students and 2,000 staff members the first two weeks of school or three weeks of school. Is that a pool testing or are you talking about individual testing?
That is individual testing. And we, part of the slide that we had of the steps we need to take is that, is that training? And so it'll be the training of the safety administrators on each school site and their teams to be able to then roll that out. So so while we'll be creating the plan for that here at the district office, the implementation of the plan at each individual school site will be the responsibility of the principal and the safety administrator.
And one more question. Could you please expand a little bit more on the communication for parents? How will parents know about this and their options to, whether to sign the release or not about their child being tested?
So we will be doing, as you can imagine, many waves of communication out to our parents using all of our variety of modes. Ms. Barnwell and I have already sat down and started talking about what that's going to look like. The campaign, it really is a campaign of information to keep our kids in school. And so parents will be hearing this week from us. They'll also be hearing from their principals. We met with principals yesterday. We're meeting with them again tomorrow. And so it's a full series of communication so they know exactly what is going on. We also have a meeting. Superintendent Maldonado is bringing together the COVID Task Force, which represents parents, community, staff members, to advise us on that as well. And so we know that parents have been very interested ever since last week when we started talking about the testing. You know, what are the details? What are the details? And so we are going to get those out to them in the next few days.
Thank you. And I, of course, you will also do that in Spanish, right?
Absolutely. Everything we do, in fact, our our updated district COVID plan, which we update as regularly as we need to, is ready to go. The reason it's not on our website is because we're having it translated into Spanish and we always present in Spanish and English.
Great, thank you. And one last comment. I urge all the parents out there, the community, to please join us in this effort. It is a community effort. We all want to keep kids in school. The teachers wants to be in school with their children, with their students. Please help us mitigate this and control this virus. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly.
Thank you for your report. I just had one question in regards to logistics of testing. So will students be tested during school hours? And if they aren't, will transportation be provided for students that won't be able to get to the testing sites?
That's a great question, Dawson. Testing will happen during the school day. And so your administrator, safety administrator at San Marcos, for example, will sit down and create a schedule of when different groups of students will be tested. It'll always be the same day each week with makeups at the end of the week. We need to make it as convenient as possible for students without disrupting instruction. By the way, this testing takes about 10 minutes per student. So if you have a class doing the testing, about 10 minutes of instruction that will be taken up to do the testing.
Thank you. I'd also like to encourage my fellow students. The way that we can go back to normalcy, because I know that's the goal that we all want, is to follow these protocols. Please, if you can, get vaccinated, wear your mask, distance. I know we all want normalcy, and this is the quickest way to get there. So thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Capps.
Thank you, Dr. Wagenek, for this incredibly helpful presentation and the the historical examples you used of World War II with your parents. I just wanted to commend the the five ways in which we are using every tool. And I just want to simplify because in addition to public health and CDC and the state of California and the epidemiologists, the person that I rely on for information is, and we've talked about him, is Dr. Ja from the Brown University School of Public Health. And he is very clear about what's needed for kids to go back to school. And these are the five tools. And to employ them all, as we are doing, is exemplary. And that's what we need to be doing as a school board. And I, and just to reiterate, your goal of, all of our goal, is to keep kids in school. And so those five tools, testing, ventilation, masks, distancing, which means a minimization of assemblies, things like that. And obviously, the biggest one is vaccination. That's the most powerful tool that we have in our toolbox right now. And it's just so important to keep those five tools in mind because they are, you know, when you simplify them that much, we see how they work together and how important it is. So just had a question on testing. Ms. Alvarez already asked the majority of my questions. But one I had was about the fact, if you could speak to how we've been testing athletes this spring and even in summer, is that correct?
Yes, so the testing of athletes with the VINAX intervention. The way that we tested students. The way that we tested student athletes was through the same process. And that was to.
Hold on, Ms. Wagenek. Sorry, I can't hear you. So I'm, I'm going to call a break. And hopefully, this will all end very soon. So I will take a 10-minute break now. Thank you. We're continuing now with item number three, the report on the relocation of Franklin Children's Center and expansion Adelante Charter School. Mr. Vizzolini.
Good evening, event board members, Superintendent Maldonado and members of the public. Tonight, I'm providing an update on the plan to reorganize the use of the Parma Site, Franklin Children's Center, and the Adelante Charter. Next slide, please. As a reminder, here's a recap of the plan. So we had an addendum to the existing facility use agreement with Adelante Charter that was approved by the board in May of 2018. Items included our approval of the use of $2.4 million in Measure J funding that was originally identified for the replacement of portable classrooms at Adelante to demolish the existing Parma buildings and construct a new children's center. When complete, the Franklin Children's Center staff and all their functions would move to the Parma Site. And then when that was completed, Adelante would be able to expand into the existing Franklin Children's Center buildings and grounds. Next slide, please. So unfortunately, during design, we ran into some challenges at the Parma Site that are a little difficult to overcome. So we wanted to explain those to the board. And a point of clarity, the existing main building at Parma is not Field Act compliant, which means that it doesn't meet current standards for seismic structural safety. And so it cannot be used as a school building. We can't put certificated staff or students inside of that building. And those are requirements by both the California Department of Education and the Division of State Architects. Another large challenge that we discovered was the space requirements for preschool. The CDE now requires 35 square feet of indoor space and 75 square feet of outdoor space per student on all of their, on all of their preschool buildings. So what we discovered was that if, by the time we build a, excuse me, we construct a building large enough and an outdoor space large enough, we're at over 7,000 feet on the building and we're over 13,000 square feet on the recreational area, which leaves very little parking left over. There will be, you know, mandatory American Disability Act parking. There will now be electric vehicle charging stations that will be required by DSA. So when all of that gets put on that site, what's left for staff and for visitors, parents, is very, very limited. So there's two options left. One is to have them drop off on Montecito Street, which is one of the more busy thoroughfares in the area that conducts traffic from the Upper East Side to the, to the Milpus Corridor. The other alternative is people may end up parking in the Trader Joe's parking lot across the street, which obviously wouldn't be real popular with Trader Joe's, but it's also got some safety concerns of its own. There is no crosswalk in the center of that block, which means families have to park in the Trader Joe's, walk to Milpus, down to Milpus Street, cross the, cross the street there and then walk another half a block back to the Parma location to get to the site because there wouldn't be enough onsite parking. So we felt like those issues were something that really needed to be brought to the attention of the board. Next slide, please. This slide just shows you a comparison. They are very close together, a couple blocks away. But you can see that on the left, the Parma Site is just about 2/3 of an acre. And the area that the Franklin Children's Center inhabits on that, on that campus is closer to two acres. So there's quite a disparity in the, the size of the two locations. Next slide, please. This is probably the toughest, other than space is budget. So you can see at the top of the side is our revenue from Measure J that was the addendum covered, the 2.4 million. And then you can see our construction estimates. We have, you know, site demolition and hazmat. We have a 7,000-square-foot building, which may or may not end up being big enough, but that's what we figure the minimum size is going to be. We have site improvements that include some of the parking we talked about, the lighting requirements, maybe some alterations to the driveway because it's very narrow. And also, the outdoor recreation space that I mentioned would all be part of that site improvements. Then we have our 10 consent, or excuse me, our 10% construction contingency, which we have on all of our construction projects. And then we have our 20% soft costs, which are very typical. And those cover items like the architect, DSA inspector, DSA fees, and, you know, various testing and inspections that are done during construction on the site. So as you can see, the total is closer to 7 million. It's a, it's quite a bit away from 2.4 million. Next slide, please. So what we have is some options for the board to consider. We realize that this is not time for the action. This is more a time to inform the board about what we found out and try and figure out a way to move forward. So some, some possible options we consider are terminating the addendum and to the, to the existing facility use agreement, keep the rest of the agreement in place and let both programs stay where they currently are. We could reallocate the 2.4 million to the classrooms at Adelante, which is where the funding originated from. And that would leave the child development program alone as well. The other option is we could consider selling it. And maybe the proceeds could go back into the bond program, or maybe they could go into a program to help with the situation at Adelante. But they are issues that we want the board to be aware of. So those were our, a few of our thoughts for the board to consider. I believe that Dr. Maldonado has some comments that she'd like to address as well. And then I'll be happy to answer questions after that.
Thank you, Mr. Vizzolini. Board members, again, this was the intent of today's report. The intent of today's report for all of you was to update you. And I know it's been about a year since we last talked about this topic. Of course, you know the conditions of COVID. I did have a chance to speak to the new executive director yesterday. I know he met today with the principal at Franklin to look at some of the space issues that they have identified as a need. And so we're working out that with Adelante. And again, this is just a report to give you the fact-finding issues that we have since this last item was approved, found to be true. And we will continue to update you and work with you, as well as the Adelante community, to figure out what might be possible next steps. I'm open for questions.
Thank you. Ms. Trujillo, I believe we have public comment on this item.
Thank you, President Ford. We do have public comment on this item. I will name five speakers. Robin Yunander, Justin West, Brianna Aguilar, Roseanne Crawford, and Rianne, Rianne Napoleon. I will begin with Robin Yunander.
Good evening, board. Thank you very much. My name is Robin Yunander. I am a parent for three kids for Adelante Charter School. Our journey started in 2014 with our first going into kindergarten. From the beginning, we parents were assured that Adelante Charter School's physical facilities would be improved. At that time, we had no playground structure. I repeat, no playground structure for our kids to use or play on. We worked hard to raise money for our own funds to buy the playground that we wanted, and we raised the money. But at that same time, dual-language immersion programs were coming online and becoming very popular. And the demand for space at our school by other students exceeded the need for the playground, unfortunately. So we had to make a tough choice to expand our school to accommodate the demand. And in doing that, we added two more temporary structures. Unfortunately, that took the, the space that we had for the playground. So we had to sacrifice the playground. And we've been kind of muddling away since then with the idea that, well, maybe someday something could change. But our partner school doesn't exactly easily allow us. You alluded to Franklin and our, our director, our new director, and their principal trying to talk. Nothing is going to change with that relationship. It hasn't yet, and it's not going to. It's a very acrimonious relationship between the schools. Three years ago, Santa Barbara School District made an agreement with us to let us use the two acres literally located right next door where the preschool is. And the preschool will be moved to a neighboring facility with a brand-new, state-of-the-art facility for them. We worked hard with the district to come up with a site plan. We entered into an agreement. You call it an addendum. We call it a contract. It's not a memo of understanding. It was a deal. But then what has changed? Okay, so did the state law change regarding some development? It sounds like Mr. Vizzolini is making that statement. But all of a sudden, we're talking about three times more the cost as well. That wasn't part of the plan when we talked about this three years ago. If the state guidelines have changed, which makes it impossible for.
Time, thank you. Our next speaker is Justin West. Justin West is not online, so I'll go to the next speaker, Brianna Aguilar.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Brianna Aguilar, and I am the board president of Adelante Charter School. I've been on the board for 11 years now, and I have a fifth grader and third grader at Adelante. Several, a couple of years ago, we began the conversations about with Superintendent Matuoka about expanding our space. Adelante currently sits on nine tenths of an acre, and we have 310 students. This is by far the smallest campus in your district in Santa Barbara Unified. And while we know we are a charter school, we still need to advocate for the needs of our students. We have lack of open space. We have lack of space for our special education program. We have had to contract with the city in order to use the parks for PE and dance, and COVID has exacerbated these issues. I am very grateful to Dr. Maldonado and Steve Vizelini for the time that we have spent trying to work out on these issues. And I am hopeful that we can return to our meeting group to kind of find some new ways to address these issues. But it is really, really important that we can address these issues. I'm also very grateful to Dr. Maldonado for helping to improve the relationship between Adelante and Franklin, and I am hopeful that there will be opportunities to improve that this year. For those of you board members who have not been to Adelante, I invite you to come for a tour so that you can see the challenges that we are facing. Just, it is such a small space, and as we address these needs of COVID and having safe places for our students to learn and to eat and to play, we really need to address these issues. I'm very hopeful that we can continue our strong partnership with the district and look forward to opportunities to work together to address these needs. We are committed to remaining on the east side where the community that the school was intended to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roseanne Crawford.
Roseanne Crawford here. Just because this relocation plan was approved under the prior superintendent doesn't mean you have to execute it. In light of the many new discovery staff is made, this direction should be changed. What bothers me the most is about equity. The early education staff did not have a voice in this decision. The Franklin Childcare Center is doing a good job with their center and will probably need more space with the push and money available from the state for pre-K expansion. They need their space on their current two-acre site, giving them half an acre at Parma and detaching it from Franklin School is like breaking up a family where many siblings attend. In this, the way, is this the way you reward one of the best-performing schools with the highest scores for Latino families? On the contrary, why should Adelante be expanded at this time? Give the new principal incentive to bring up scores. That small amount of money can be kept aside for improvements that most likely are needed with the current structure. Don't sell Parma land. Now is not the time. Terminate the addendum to the facility use agreement and leave both programs in their current location. The McKinley conversion of the entire school to a bilingual school should take off immediate pressure, however, falls short of equity as the entire conversion of McKinley School to a bilingual school does not leave choice for parents that want one track left in English at their neighborhood school. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rayanne Napoleon.
Hi, good evening. So first of all, I wish that we were celebrating your Honoring Juneteenth instead of you having to hear about it in vermechtum and Nuremberg code. I wish I could buy each of you a margarita for every time you had to hear that tonight, but that's not why I'm here to talk with you. So my name is Dr. Rayanne Napoleon, and I am here to request that you honor the commitment you made to Adelante Charter School. As a fellow educator, I have great concern for Adelante and Franklin Children's Center. I'm also a mother of three children, the older of which is entering first grade at Adelante, and the other two are four and 10 months and future students there. Also a chemistry professor at Santa Barbara City College, where I interface with hundreds of students and bridge the gap between students and administrators as the president of Academic Senate. Tonight, I'm speaking solely as a parent, and my views are my own. As I know you know, the elementary school serves a large Latino population. In addition, it is excellent at providing bilingual, biliterate, and bicultural education. Therefore, honoring your previous commitment to the school serves an equity population, and honoring your commitment is the right thing to do. I understand that educational space, especially in Santa Barbara, is an issue that's very important to many educators in my network, and our primary concern is of the well-being of future generations. This is a safety concern and a professional concern. I and other parents are relying on you, our community leaders, to prioritize your previous commitments so that the children of Adelante have adequate space for learning and growing and safe space. Thank you so much for being so attentive to these issues. I know tonight was just a report, but please keep these comments in your thoughts moving forward. As a concerned citizen and a leader in Santa Barbara's educational system, I believe that we have an obligation to vulnerable people in our community, especially our students, and I'm confident that you feel the same. Thank you so much, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. And President Ford, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Trujillo. Mr. Vizelini, thank you so much for your report. Dr. Maldonado, did you have something you wanted to say?
No.
Alrighty, then I will open this up for any comments or questions from board members. Ms. Capps, please.
Yeah, thank you to the speakers and to Mr. Vizelini and Dr. Maldonado. I share the disappointment of this development of, you know, having been somewhat involved in the discussions and understanding how extensive they were for years to get to the point where the board actually passed an agreement. And I, so I'm sort of still in that mode of learning with this agenda that we can't move forward after. It seemed as though a lot of things were in place. And so I do have some questions that are somewhat backwards-looking. I should state my overarching support for Adelante, and I encourage, as a speaker invited, my fellow board members to visit there if you haven't already. It is just an incredibly dynamic campus, and it's incredibly cramped. And they have a waiting list because so many people in this community want dual-language immersion and it's, and know about the successes and really the magic of Adelante. So I am supportive of trying to come to some solution. I do have just a couple of questions that do look backwards. Why, for example, was estimate for 2.4 million given? If it's actually 7 million, I mean, how did we get to so far along where we actually signed an agreement based on an estimate that was so far off? What went into that? If Mr. Vizelini can speak to that, to that figure. And also, it seemed to me at the time, I even toured the childcare facility, that they were on board with this when it went to the, when it came to us. And now to learn that they are, you know, is rethinking there. So I want to just understand those two pieces and then and then just want to lend my full support for finding as robust a solution as possible and to reengage in that important and instructive dialogue that occurred.
Sure, Ms. Capps, I could do my best here. So the 2.4 number came from the original budget to replace portables at Adelante. At the time, there was never any estimate about what a new building might cost. So, you know, that might be a loophole in the thinking of the group. But, you know, the 2.4 million was, is a budget number, and as we're seeing on other construction projects, escalation's a huge factor. And, you know, right now, we couldn't replace the five portables at Adelante with that $2.4 million like we intended back in 2014 either. So that's probably the main difference is the cost of construction for, you know, the difference in the equity of what could happen at the site at Adelante versus redeveloping and completely redeveloping the Parma site. And regarding the children's center staff, my only, I guess my only input on that would be that the biggest issues came up and we initially intended to bring the the preschool assessment team along with them and put them in that same complex so that we would free up more space. And when we started having those conversations, we determined that they could, we had to find a different place for the assessment team. They aren't, they're over at Santa Barbara Junior High now. We just recently did that. And so, you know, I don't, I don't, can't speak for the former director, but I know that in speaking with Ms. Ochoa, she just, you know, said basically the site they're on is much bigger, and that's what, you know, that's what she enjoys.
Well, thank you. Again, I don't know where we go. I appreciate that some options were were listed, but they're pretty vague, and I know that this is just a report, and I, you know, it's always good that you're bringing this to the board. But I share the just dismay that we, you know, things weren't moving along as we all, I mean, as a board member, just assumed they were. So I would just hope that we can reinvigorate the conversations and the creativity and problem-solving that's required to make sure that this campus and this school has more room. I appreciate that there's hopefully a renewed, with a new director, a renewed attempt to solidify the relationship between Franklin and Adelante because that is key to this moving forward and so important. So again, just if you could know that at least one board member would like to have regular updates as things move forward here and to reengage that group that was working hand-in-hand for years to try to come to the solution that we thought was on track. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Alvarez.
Mr. Vizelini, since I wasn't part of the discussion back in, a few years back, was the Parma site, did we know the Parma site was not Field Act compliant back in 2018 when the $2.4 million budget was set? Or is this, so we did know that already? Okay, so this is not a new development. Okay. And this new estimate, the $7 million estimate, is that mainly because of cost escalation in construction? Or is it because we found some more issues that we have to add to that cost, to that new cost?
It's a little of both. You know, construction escalation is a huge factor for everybody right now. But the other, there are some things that should be considered, too. The site work is not typical for what we're going to have to do. We're going to have to do a complete demolition. We have asbestos abatement and lead abatement in the building that needs to get dropped, so we have air pollution control district issues. Those are all costs that are not typical for like a renovation project that we would normally do. I think the other, the other thing to remember is that the preschools require a restroom, a boys' and girls' restroom in every single room, and they're much bigger, as we said, you know, about the 35 square foot per child. But the restroom facilities have to be there, whether you have two kids or 100 kids. You have to have, you have to have them in each restroom, or excuse me, in each classroom. And then you also have to have public restrooms, right? So the staff has to have restrooms. They can't use the kids. The kids' restrooms are specific to childcare. They're small fixtures that are very low to the ground. The sinks are low to the ground, so it's not, it's also not a facility that we could use for another purpose some other time in the future. So that's, that's an important consideration. And then we also have to add office and reception space, which is not typical for our, most of our buildings that we construct. And then the last part is that, you know, the outdoor recreation space isn't just a piece of grass, right? It's, it's going to have to be a play structure. It's going to have to be probably places for trikes to roll around and a safe outdoor environment for lots of little kids. So it needs to be big, and it's, it's not your typical development on a regular type of project. So I think those are probably the main factors.
And, thank you. And the 10% contingency, construction contingency, that seems to be low based on everything that you just mentioned of all that it's involved in this project. It seems to me that right now, the seven, the projected 7 million could potentially be a little bit more. What's your thought on that?
I think that that's correct, and I will, I would say that the 10% contingency is it's suspect to change, right? So it's, it's going to be based on what our construction cost is. So if our construction cost goes up, then our contingency will go up with it.
Yes, I'm also very much interested in us having a discussion and finding, finding a solution that works for everyone. So thank you for this report.
Ms. Munoz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vizelini. And as Ms. Capps has expressed and Ms. Alvarez, I was also, I was very disappointed with this new, you know, with this news that we received. I also question if if this was known previously, like why the board wasn't informed, first of all, and also the cost that, realistically, what the cost is in terms of using the Parma site. And in addition to that, you know, I have toured the Adelante School. I have toured it, and I've also attended the graduation. I've spoken to the parents. And I think that we need to think about our children, our young children that are vulnerable and that have been the parents and the children that has, the students that have been waiting for this playground and additional space. I do want to know more, you know, more specifics on this as to how we're going to resolve this. And certainly encouraged by, you know, the fact that there's going to be energy put into improving the relationship between the two schools that sit side by side in addition to the Franklin Children's Center. So I too look forward to more information and, you know, before we are able to make a decision.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Sims-Monten.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vizelini, for, for this report, and certainly I echo the questions and comments of my sister board members. And I, you know, and before I make my, have my question is, I have every belief that we're going to come to a solution that is, that ends up for the well-being and caring of all that's concerned. I have no doubt about that. And, and part of that certainly is repairing relationships, re-establishing it, re-engaging in whatever we need to do, because we know that relationships are key. Even when you're in the middle of, of challenges, the relationship is the one that can get you through that. So I know that's something that I, as some of the speakers spoke about, re-establishing the relationship between Adelante and Franklin. Because as we look at it, we got to make sure that we're working together to ensure that we're preparing, preparing our students for the world as yet to be creative. And so the question that I have, the 2.4 million, was that, was that just to replace the portables? Because I, maybe perhaps I'm confused because was the 2.4 million that was set aside, was that to replace the portables and then look at renovating the Parma site, or are they two different things?
They are two different things. So there was not going to be a lot of funding put into the Parma building if they were to move into it. The 2.4 million was part of the original Measure J, and there were five portables at Adelante. They were identified in that over 28, or excuse me, over 25-year age group, and that's why, that's where that number came from. And that, you know, the other thing is that the cost per square foot of debt of construction has gone up significantly, so that, that 2.4 unfortunately is probably not going to take care of five classrooms at Adelante right now either. So there's some, there's some tough conversations to be had about that kind of thing, too, the budgets.
And the question with regards to the Parma site, that since you'd have to demolish that altogether in order to get it up to code and to be able to fit a preschool with all its needs, and it's not, this is not trying to be a solution. I'm just trying to think it through in terms of thinking of the thinking of that. Would it have been better to have the Adelante site there? Because it's more traditional there as opposed to having to do all the things that it takes to get a preschool, the demands of a preschool on that site.
I think that I think you might be creating the same situation over there, but it's something to look at for sure. But it's only two-thirds of an acre, and so they, there would be no space for a large field there, you know. And I think either way, if you build enough classrooms to house Adelante, there's no more space, and the parking is still an issue. So it's just, it's, it's a very small lot, unfortunately, and it's just, I believe it was a home at one point, and it was donated to the district or something many, 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 many years ago. And it's, it was never a school building other than just being used as one.
Okay, so then that begs the question, is this the best site to use, whether it becomes a new preschool or whether it would be, you know, Adelante, just expanding for the classroom? So something to think about. So something to think about that. Is that the best use of that for the need that, that, that we're talking about tonight? So something to think about. And I too, and I, I, you know, I would like for this to be a, you know, like a study session to give us a little bit more time. And at that point, I don't want to add on to our staff, but if we can have a little bit more time to talk about these things. And then as, as I think Ms. Capps and also Ms. Alvarez expressed, making sure that we have, you know, regular reports on it so that we can start to continue to do that. And I think if we continue to have the re-engaging of the conversation and see what's best for everyone. And then the last question I had, didn't we do an upgrade on the, um, the Franklin Childcare Center, a recent upgrade on the yard there?
We did. Uh, we did, we actually did a heating system there. And we did upgrades to some restrooms there, which were in former bonds. And also the outside play area. So they got a new play structure. They got a struck, they got a storage unit. They got some artificial turf. They got some regular turf. They got a bicycle, you know, tricycle course. So yes, they did. And it was, it is specific just to preschool kids. It's that size.
So, so my, what, my, my question on that would be, would it make sense for us to, having done those upgrades, to move them to that? Is there something else we might want to look at? Because I, I sincerely appreciate and understand and really want to advocate for, you know, at Adelante, the space that their kids need to grow and be, you know, the best that they can be in, in a good educational environment. But just given the fact that we just did all those upgrades so that I, I would wonder if that would be the best in terms of moving them from that site to do that. But again, I, I'm looking forward to other reports. Thank you for the work on this and the thinking of what we got to do. But, and looking forward to the regular reports.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? If not, Dr. Maldonado and Mr. Vizelini, I would just say that you can hear that the board is disappointed. And you can hear that this board expects a good solution. The $4 million delta seems prohibited, but that's why it's going to take the very best thinking that we have. And it's also going to take a lot of cooperation between the two schools. I know I will help any way I could. I'm sure every board member feels the same way. We want both schools to be successful and have enough room. The money is a serious issue, but please involve us and keep us up to date on finding a meaningful solution for both schools.
We will do so, and I share your disappointment. And as, as I know, Mr. Vizelini does, but we will work together to do the best we can with the resources that we have.
And we will wait. The next item, number four, that we're, I'm going to, is the revised state budget impacts. And board members, I'd like to remind you that we've had a chance to look at this information. And Ms. Hernandez, thank you for keeping your report as short and succinct as possible. And Kim needs to be at a microphone? Again, this is information we've had a chance to review. It's a report only. No action will be taken by the board. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hernandez. There you are.
Okay, good. Okay. Hello again. Good evening. Seems like it's been a long evening, but here we go. And I'll try to keep it as short as possible. So this is a board presentation I wanted to bring to you tonight based on the changes that we've had in the state budget between May revise and the June 28th budget that, that was finally enacted. Next slide, please. Okay, so it's all really good news. We've had increases from the May revise that we're now going to be seeing in our budget. So these are the items that I'm going to talk about. And I have slides for each one. But the first one, I don't have a slide for, I just wanted to talk to. So this is the LCFF COLA at 5.07%. As a reminder, COLA means the Cost of Living Adjustment. And this was actually in the May revise. I just wanted to let you know that that stayed in the enacted budget, which is excellent. But on top of that, we received additional COLA increases in other programs that we were all hopeful would happen, and they did happen in the enacted budget. The, um, one of the largest ones was for special education. And that went up from 1.05% to 4.05%. So that's a really nice, healthy increase, and we were super happy to see that. We'll go over the, um, the next ones as we go through. So next slide, please. Expanded learning for K-6. So what this is, I'll take this off so you can hear me. So the expanded learning for K-6, what this is, is a no-cost summer school and, um, summer school and after-school programs for students who are the unduplicated percentage, which is the low-cost, the low-income students, the foster youth and the English language learners. So the way that this is going to be calculated, the CDE is going to calculate it based on your overall unduplicated pupil count percentage. So the districts that have over an 80% unduplicated pupil count will have, will see $1,170 per unduplicated student in the K through 6 range. Um, all the, the rest, the remaining of the funds in that bucket of funding will then be allocated to the, the rest of the K through 6 LEAs based on their unduplicated percentage. And no district will receive any less than $50,000. Okay, next slide, please. This is pre-K planning and implementation grants. So our, our state is moving towards a, um, over the next five years of doing the universal TK pre-K for, for all public schools. And what, and that's going to be fully implemented in the 25, 26 school year. So this $300 million that's coming to us this year is to prepare for that, that process. So this year, we're going to be receiving funding that is just for pre-K planning and implementation of the universal pre-K. So, um, we will receive at least a minimum of $100,000 base grant for operating kindergarten programs. And then the rest of the funds will be split, a 60/40 split. 60% will be based on the 1920 kindergarten allotment. And then the, the other 40% will be for supplemental grants based on the 1920 kindergarten enrollment, which would be then multiplied by the unduplicated pupil percentage again. Next slide, please. So this one is kind of in line with, with the last slide. In order to prepare for this universal pre-K, there's, they're going to be, there's money in the budget for facilities expansion. So currently, there is a full-day kindergarten facilities grant program, and that will be expanded to include pre-K and TK classrooms. So in the current grant, there's some restrictions. There's a local matching requirement, financial hardships. There's a priority for the grants. All of that will, will stay the same. They're just going to expand it to include pre-K and TK. This money can be used for construction or modernization of classrooms, but it, it cannot be used for portables, not for buying portables, not for fixing up portables. It's just for new facilities that, other than portables. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, food service. So through the pandemic, Santa Barbara Unified provided free breakfast and lunch to all students. We are proud that we could have served 1.2 million nourishing meals through this challenging time. And I'm just super, super proud of my food service team. So now going forward, we are, you know, in person. So we're not, not providing the grab and go kind of thing. So if we return to what we were receiving, what we were serving prior to COVID, that was 30,000 to 35,000 meals per week. So we're assuming that we'll be close to that level. This will be free to all Santa Barbara Unified School District students 18 and under. A parent can pick up the food for a student at the site. So in the budget, there was money that was added to the, the food service reimbursement rates. So the breakfast rate went from 2.375 per meal up to 2.4625. And lunch was similar. There was an increase. It went from 4.1525 to 4.3175. I don't know about you, but I, I don't know how many, how many decimals out. We can go on the cents, but we could round that. Currently, the cost per lunch is, is about $6. So it's, we're still a little bit in the hole there, but it's, it's getting closer. So kind of like the universal pre-K, there is also going to be universal free meals to all students in, starting in 22, 23. Right now, I don't know what those rates will be, but that's, we're really excited about that, that that's going forward. Next slide, please. So kind of like the universal pre-K, getting ready for the universal free meals, there's going to be, there's money in the budget to get us ready for that. So 120 million for, uh, at one time, so it's not continuing. It's a one-time amount for kitchen infrastructure upgrades to increase student access, to improve the quality of school meals. Every district will receive a base amount of $25,000 for this. And then the uses are, the allowable uses are, you know, kind of to help our kitchen infrastructure. So it's cooking and service equipment, refrigeration, storage, and transportation of food equipment between the sites. That's, again, it's just a one-time, just for this year. There's also a little bit of money in there for training of service staff. So I'm, I'm really proud of our food service here at Santa Barbara Unified. All of our meals are, you know, scratch meals and prepared, fresh every day. Bread is made every morning. I just, oh, love that. So, um, but there are other school districts that, that aren't there. And our state is really trying to get all school districts to provide really good, healthy, scratch meals if possible. So the staff training is at least $2,000. It's, it's small, but that's, that's what it's for, is to kind of train staff to get ready for this universal meals and also hopefully training in, in really nutritious ways of making meals. There's also going to be some one-time federal dollars that is to offset the pandemic-related costs. We'll see how those, those are going to show up. Okay, next slide, please. Special education. There is actually quite a lot of money that's coming, increases in the special education realm. And I'll talk about each of, of these. There's state money and there's also federal dollars. There's a one-time increase in, in this school year related to the American Recovery Act that President Biden signed. So let's just go to the next slide. Please, thank you. So the first one has to do with the base rate increase. So the way that the state special education funding works is that in the state of California, we have SLPAs. And all of the special ed funding goes to the SLPAs for each of the school districts. And that's how it's allocated out. So it's, for years, there were different base rates where you start, the starting point about how the money was allocated across the SLPAs. Every SLPA had a different rate. So the state has really been working to make that one rate for everybody. And so they call that the target base rate. And over the past few years, our local SLPA in Santa Barbara County was a little bit below that target rate. So we were moving up to get up to the rate that they wanted to use. And on top of that, so we were seeing some increases. And then back in 2021, just last year, the base rate had increased to $625 per average daily attendance. So that's how the money starts and is calculated for each SLPA. But by May revise, we were looking at that being $650 per ADA, and we were all pretty excited. And then by the time the budget was enacted, June 28th, it was $715. So you can kind of see there, I, I've shown what, how much money, the, the money that's comes from the state is called AB 602 funding. And you can see how that's gone up every year from 1819. So, and also to keep in mind that this will help to reduce the contribution from the general fund to pay for special education. Because special education is never fully funded. The general fund pays for some of the special education. We receive some funding from the federal government and the rest from the state. And then of course, some from our property taxes. Next slide, please. This one is kind of, this one is really interesting because this has been a significant change. This is called low-incidence funds. And this is funding that comes from the state. It's part of AB 602 funding, but it goes directly to the SLPA and is held in, in an account for each district to use. So low-incidence funds, historically, for decades, has been used only for materials and equipment for low-incidence students. Low-incidence students are the students that, who are deaf and hard of hearing, visually impaired, orthopedically impaired. And they need special equipment and materials. So for example, someone who is deaf and hard of hearing might need special stereo equipment in the classroom in order to be able to hear the teacher. Or someone who is visually impaired might need extra materials in braille so that they could read. Someone who has, who is orthopedically impaired might need extra equipment in the classroom in order to lift them up or to, for them to be able to get around. So that's very, very specific items. The state now has changed the way we can use that funds, those funds in, and has added to the materials and equipment. And it said now that we can use it for services, which is very exciting because we have a lot of service, lot of services that we provide students that we can now use this funding for. In the past, each year, SLPA would receive about, our, our local SLPA, Santa Barbara County SLPA, would receive about $225,000 per year. And that money was never fully spent. It was allowed to carry over year after year because you can imagine you buy equipment for a student one year. You, that equipment would probably follow that student to the next grade. You wouldn't have to keep buying them over and over again in a lot of cases. So there was always a lot of money left over that was carried over to the next year. But the state has now changed not only the allowable uses of this funding, but they have increased it dramatically. Last year, it went up to $1.4 million, which is, which means, I did the math, that Santa Barbara Unified can expect at least $200,000 that we can use this year. And plus any carryover funds from last year, which I have on good, little birdie told me that there will be some carried over from last year. So these funds, again, any special ed, extra special education funds that we receive help to reduce the contribution from our general fund. Next slide, please. Okay, this is the early intervention preschool grant program. This is kind of similar to that universal TK that we talked about, but it is only for the special education students. So this is something that in, in the year 1920, we received a preschool grant that was similar to this one. And they're kind of, the CDE decided to do this again. And it's very similar to that, but the way they calculated it is different. So it, what they're using is our first grade students with disabilities as, as the calculation. And you might think that sounds very strange for preschoolers. But part of the issue is that, that the CDE had a lot of difficulty trying to figure out, and we all kind of had difficulty figuring out was, how do you calculate preschoolers with disabilities if you, if they're not included in, in CalPads or the other form of reporting? in CalPads or the other form of reporting? So the CDE decided to go ahead and use the first-grade students as a benchmark kind of for individual school districts, and that's what they're doing. This funding is going to be to supplement existing special education resources. So in other words, it's not to replace it, it's to add on to it, to allow for early intervention of preschool. And it's to support services for children zero through five years old in inclusive settings to improve their school readiness. So it's kind of, you know, again, kind of like that universal pre-K that we're talking about. And what's interesting about it is that, you know, when your assessments are not, assessments for special education are typically general education costs, because you can't, you're assessing a general education population to determine if they need special ed services. So this is actually a special education grant that you can use to assess little kiddos for this. And it's, you know, and it shows you there what the eligible uses are, wraparound services. Also, you can use it for professional development to help build capacity to serve these students with exceptional needs. So this is a really, it's a really good one, and we'll have to look at some good ways to use this money. Next slide, please. Okay, alternative dispute resolution. So there's, this one is kind of interesting as well. There's $100 million that's going to go to SLPAs in the state of California, and it's to assist districts in conducting prevention of involuntary alternative dispute resolution specifically as it relates to the COVID-19 pandemic and specifically as it relates to special ed students and their families. So there's, of the money that is going to come to SLPA, 80% of it is going to be allocated out to the districts. I believe they're probably going to hold it, kind of like that other one, in accounts at the SLPA, but we are able to use it. We will not be able to use it for legal fees or those kinds of things, but we can use it to work with our families, to prevent and to help implement any sort of alternative dispute resolutions as it relates to the pandemic for these families who may have experienced some significant disruption due to the pandemic. So I think that's my last slide. Is that it? I think so. Does anyone have any, do you have any questions or anything?
Hold on, let me make sure that we don't have any public comments. Is that correct, Ms. Trujillo?
Correct, no public comment.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Hernandez, for this great update. Very informative, and as you said, the numbers look good. So board members, there's no requirement that you make any comments or questions, but if you've got something burning on your mind for Ms. Hernandez, please let me know now. Okay, one thing, Ms. Alvarez.
I promise, only one thing. Thank you so much for this great presentation, so thorough and easy to understand. As you know, this current year budget, our projected expenditures are exceeding our projected revenue, so I'm very much interested in doing a real good sweep of the budget and implementing all this new funding and see how we can fix that. So thank you. That's my comment.
Thank you, and Ms. Simms-Moten, please.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. I echo those comments, and I just have two quick questions. Do we need a match to draw down any of these dollars? I didn't see that we did, but just a question.
I didn't understand. I'm sorry, what was the question? I didn't hear you.
Do we need a match to draw down any of these dollars?
A match. So the facilities grant was the only one that I know of where you have to match the funds.
Okay, so yeah, I just wanted to make sure, which is always good, we don't have to have a match. The other question is, the one-time use dollars, can we carry them over if we don't spend them in that year? Are we able to do, are we able to hold on to it even though it's one-time money? But I think you said there was 120 million.
Let's see, which one was the one-time use you're talking about?
There's a couple one-time uses. I guess it's a general question of one-time money. Can we draw, can we carry it over if we don't spend it?
Yeah, I will have to get further information on that. In general, no, but I'll find out for you.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from board members? And with that, we will continue on. Thank you so much for this excellent report. Board members, I do want to let you know that we are postponing the Summer of Learning Report until the next board meeting, and I know we're all really looking forward to hearing the summary of this really successful program. So that will take us to our final item for today, which is a report from our legal counsel, Craig Price. Welcome, Craig, about the trustee area elections that we'll be putting into place for the 2022 November school board elections.
I don't think your mic is on. Good evening. I know it's late, and you've had a long meeting, so I intend to keep my comments brief. My intentions are to summarize how we got to the point, how you got to the point where you are now, where you are poised to begin the process of moving from at-large elections into district elections with the associated mapping that needs to occur. So I'm going to briefly describe why you are here at the point where you are, and then you are fortunate to have your consultant, Jason Rich, who is the CEO of Cooperative Strategies, I believe, who is on board virtually. Is that right? Before I presume too much, I want to make sure that he's with us. Well?
Can someone tell us?
We'll see if he comes on. In any event, I spoke with him this morning and learned that he was intending to participate virtually, and I thought it would be particularly important for him to describe the more critical process compared to what I'm going to be commenting on, because his focus is, where do you go from here? What does that process look like? What are the considerations needing to be taken into account? And what is the timeline? So I'll start in briefly. I think that before 2018, there was no school district in Santa Barbara County, at least that I'm aware of, that was anything other than at-large, meaning, of course, electing trustees, where everybody votes for everybody that's running for office. The only exceptions were Allen Hancock College, Santa Barbara City College, and the Santa Barbara County Education Board, those seven trustees. So what happened? The California Voting Rights Act actually went into effect in 2003, and it was intended to enhance the ability of minority groups to be able to either elect their candidates or positively influence their participation in elections. Over the course of time, it became a ripe area for litigation, and there were a number of suits particularly involving cities and counties. And as the courts weighed in on the California Voting Rights Act, it became very apparent that in most instances, there was virtually no defense to a claim, because all that was... I'm sorry, what are we looking at?
Justin Rich is on now as a panelist.
Okay, well, excellent. So then I can really keep it short and turn it over to him. But it became very litigious with attorneys who were filing claims because of the very low bar for proving that there was what's called racially polarized voting. And so one by one jurisdictions lost cases, others started to roll over when threatening letters occurred. There were a lot of legal fees that had to be paid, and on, and on, and on. And by the time we got to, certainly 2017, we had seen what happened with the city of Santa Barbara, we'd seen what happened with some surrounding municipalities. And at that point in time, some of our local districts, including yourself, decided that it would be a prudent move for you to agree that you would move to trustee area elections, not as a result of a threat, but because you knew that the day was coming. But that rather than doing it in 2018 or 2019, you adopted a resolution that said that you would make that move after the 2020 census results came out, because it needs to be changed every 10 years. And it hardly made sense to go through the exercise, draw district boundaries, and then have, you know, a year, 18 months before the next census came out. So you made that decision, a resolution was adopted that I know you're all familiar with. And so now that we are nearing the point when the demographer is going to be able to get the essential information that he needs to do the mapping to bring back to you, you're going to be in a process to move forward through a number of different hearings that he will tell you about involving a number of different criteria that need to be taken into account. One more item that I want to mention, that again, I'm sure you recall. Along about the time that the board adopted its resolution in 2018, there was a challenge presented by a couple of your local constituents saying that the law required that you actually break up the district into seven and not five seats. And there was some discussion between that council and me, and I took the position quite confidently that the California Voting Rights Act has nothing to do with the number of trustee areas that were broken up into and that there was no conceivable violation. However, in bringing that request, as it were, from some of your constituents to the board and following discussion, you authorized then-Supervisor Matt Suwoka to write a letter back to the claimants indicating that although there was no legal violation, when the time came, he would certainly inquire into the viability and practicality of possibly breaking the district into seven rather than five election areas. And so I believe that Jason is going to be prepared to work with you and take a look at that and potentially see whether it could be expected in any way to improve the potential for minorities in the community to have a greater say or greater influence in local elections. So with that, I'm happy to turn it over to Jason, who I believe is on board.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. Thank you, Craig. My name's Justin Rich with Cooperative Strategies. As Craig mentioned, I'm going to speak to the timeline that's involved in this process and also some of the considerations that go into drawing maps. We are in sort of strange times as many things that are affected by COVID. This process is not immune to that. What we need in order to conduct our work is the 2020 census data, which in a normal year would have been released in March or April. But because of the delay in releasing that data, we expect it to have, we expect to have it in a usable form in September. That has condensed our timeline. So once, once we receive that data, we can, we can start our process of creating maps for you all to review. But prior to that, and what's required in the election code is that districts that are moving to being, being elected at large to Bay Area is a series of public hearings to allow a forum for community input. So we're required to hold two public hearings before we even start to draw maps, and that's really the first step in the process, again, the public input process. Those hearings need to occur within 30 days of each other, and so we'll be holding those maps, those pre-map hearings likely before or concurrently with the census data being released. Following those hearings, we will start to draw maps based on the input that we hear from the community, from you all. I'll talk a little bit about some of those considerations that go into drawing those maps. But again, we're required to hold at least two public hearings, and I'll note that many of our clients are also planning for a third public hearing, just to make sure that they're capturing the, starting off with a certain set of maps, taking in some feedback and input, and then coming back and revising those. So that's certainly something that we can plan for in our timeline, and that's really the next phase of the process. Once you have a map that is, that you adopt and are satisfied with, something that you may have been hearing about before is the process of getting an election, or, excuse me, getting a waiver from the State Board of Education and removing the requirement to take this change in election method out to the voters in the community. So Senate Bill 442 was just signed by the governor a couple of weeks ago now, and that has taken away that waiver requirement. So now the county committee will have the authority to approve any change in election method and the trustee area map that you submit to them. So that's good news in this process, and I think just a response to the short timeline and the overwhelming number of districts that are going to be going through the same thing. So that's, that's the good news. Just in terms of the end date for this, in order to put this into effect and implement these changes for the 2022 election cycle, the district really needs to wrap this process up by March, and that includes having gone to the county committee and getting their approval. So why don't I talk a little bit about some of the considerations that go into drawing maps? I really differentiate these in two different ways. There are some requirements that you have to do, and then there's some other requirements that you may want to do along the process. So first and foremost, the trustee areas must be balanced in population. This is the one-person, one-vote concept, and it's required under, under the federal Constitution, the equal protection clause. So that is a hard and fast, hard and fast requirement that they must be roughly equal. That's been interpreted to be the largest and the smallest. Trustee areas must have no more than a 10% differential in terms of total population. So that's the first thing that we have to comply with. We also have to draw the boundaries such that they're in compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act, making sure that they are in compliance with Section 2, and that is that we're not, we're not diluting the ability of a protected class to be able to influence the outcome of an election. Protected class in this context has to do with racial, minority groups, and ethnic groups, also those that speak a foreign language as well. So those are the things that we have to do through this process, and we will be providing you with data and analysis that shows whether or not you're meeting those in conjunction with Craig and making sure that we're, you know, we're following the letter of the law there. Now, the other things that you will want to do is, to the extent that you can, draw areas that are compact and contiguous. Now, geography can be challenging, and the... and, and the district has, you know, a certain shape. And so making areas that are very compact and contiguous isn't always possible when you're trying to balance population, when you're trying to consider the, the geographic features of the district and, and all of those sorts of things. We also want to respect communities of interest as, as much as possible. Communities of interest can have a broad meaning. And, but what, what it really in, what, what it really represents is those groups that have shared social and economic characteristics. But again, that, that can be a broad definition for, for a lot of different things. I mentioned, you know, the, the geographic features of the district and, you know, the, the, the different things that may, may be logical boundary lines and, and dividing features within the district. Those are the types of things that, that we take into consideration again because those often can be the, the dividing line between different communities. And so, so we want to think about that. There, there can be other local considerations as well. And those, I think, are unique to each district and something that we'll, we will want to keep in mind. I know in, in, in the case of your district, the feeder districts may be something that, you know, to, to the extent we're, we're looking at their boundaries. And, you know, again, as long as we're meeting those balanced population requirements and, and we're in compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act, those are the types of things that, that we will be looking at. So, so those are the major considerations that, that go into this. You know, the important part of those pre-map hearings that, that I was telling you about, the important part of, of your role in this is to help identify some of those that are really important for your community. And it's our job to, to number one, make sure that we're drawing maps that are legal in, in terms of the law and also represent your community. So, so that'll be our role in this process. I'll pause for any questions. But I think that's, that's what I wanted to cover with you all tonight.
Thanks so much to both of you for presenting. I, I would love it if you could just help us have a better understanding of, I, I'm assuming you've done this before, Justin. So what can we expect to learn from the public hearings?
I think you will, what, what I've seen in other districts is that there will, there will be, and, and just to, to clarify, those, those, when, when we're drawing these boundaries and we're considering, considering those communities of interest and, and we're considering other things that, that the community is sharing with us, we, we really are going to focus on those things that keeps communities together and provides for good representation. And so, so you may hear things about, you know, there is a certain neighborhood. And if you were to draw the line such that it divided that neighborhood, that may, you know, that, that may split up their influence or their, their shared interests. And, and that would be something that would not be desirable. You, you may hear for, for certain of these protected classes that, that we'll be evaluating within the district, Hispanic minority groups and, and things of that nature, that if we draw the, the line in, in a particular way, that that could have an adverse effect, again, on that community identity. And that, and that doesn't allow them to be able to have a common voice. So those are the types of things that, that I might expect to hear.
Thanks, that's really helpful. Board members, are there any questions or comments that you'd like to make at this time? I see none. So thank you both for giving us this good introduction. And we're looking forward to the next steps. This will be an interesting project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board members, as you can see in coming events, tomorrow, we will be welcoming all new teachers to the district. And next Monday, there's a graduation for students who completed their requirements over the summer. And as everyone here knows, next Tuesday is the first day of school. Take a look at the numerous agenda items that will be happening in the fall. And this is only a partial list, just to give everyone an idea what's coming up. And please let us know if there are any things that you would like to have added. And we can try to accommodate them in the next two months or so. Our next board meeting is on Tuesday, August 24th at 5:30 PM with the board and cabinet masked and meeting in person with the public participating virtually. And as we adjourned tonight, the board and I want to send our respect, admiration, and encouragement to all the educators and supporting staff who will lead the way to a great school year on Tuesday. Let's not lose the excitement that the first day of school brings. And in the words of the poet William Butler Yeats, "Education is not the filling of a pail, but the lighting of a fire." For me, there's nothing more important than that. So let the flames of learning and teaching burn brightly for 2122. Tonight's meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School Board is adjourned. Good evening.